Take it away, well.
Well, thank you, everyone. I'm sorry, we're. Hi, everyone. We're starting a little bit late. We had some technical difficulties with the Zoom. Link, but we now seem to be in business. If you are on participating. And you know of someone who wanted to participate remotely. If you could pass along the meeting ID, that would be helpful. It's you have it, obviously, if you've gotten connected, but it's eight, four, five, four, four, five, eight, six, two, one, five. We are now starting our regular meeting of the Cyo Township Board of Trustees. It's seven, eleven. We'll begin with the role and then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Flintoff, present. Brazil.
Present.
Gary.
Present.
Noel.
Present.
Riser.
Present.
All present.
All right. Rejoin the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of British France, one nation. First up is, well, I guess, first of all, I would like to. Share that in our, we had a special meeting to discuss the fire funding issue preceded this meeting. And. We're now in our regular meeting. Unfortunately, we've lost our township manager. She is not feeling well, and so she has left. So we're going to proceed without her. She did ask us to continue because this is vital that we have. There's some things that we just have to deal with this evening, even though she will not be present in person to engage in the, in the discussion. The first item is our adoption of an agenda. I know that there are some proposed changes. I think they're. I'm not sure whom wants to discuss them.
It doesn't matter. Go ahead. You want me to go? Yeah, okay. Oh, the, I'd like to pull G thirteen from the consent, please.
E thirteen, so that move that to new business.
I believe so.
Well, that's where we go.
Okay. Well, you asked me, so I wasn't sure.
Well, I wasn't sure exactly what you were saying, but so G thirteen, you would like to remove from the consent agenda, so that would be added at the end of. K six.
Add a new business.
At the end of new business, although I was just hesitating because I'm wondering if we can get it out of the way at the beginning of new business instead. If people are willing, pardon?
We have guests for it?
Well, I know there's someone who is waiting to answer questions about it and not here in person, but remotely.
Maybe we should.
So let's, if we could put that, why don't we put it after K one? That's okay?
Okay.
So that'd be G thirteen after K one and new business. Any other changes?
Yes. To remove K five for the six-year capital improvement plan. And to, and to call a special meeting for Tuesday, April sixteenth, that's seven. So we've been able to do a conversation regarding capital improvement. Our capital improvement plan and Kathy, we talked about that earlier. You said you were going to talk to. Somebody else, but I did call Matt Parks to see if he would be available because he needs to be included, of course, O H M. And he said tentatively, he's waiting another potential to see if this potential commitment is. But he's here tonight, so he can answer that. But Tuesday, April sixteenth, that would be in between the two April meetings.
So the motion would be to remove K five from tonight's agenda. And.
Call for a special meeting at seven P M, April sixteenth.
I, I would just, yeah, go ahead.
For the sole purpose of considering this. This item with six-year capital improvement, then we can just discuss items on there in more detail. Because I think this is a.
I, I will note that the C I P is not required to be adopted by March thirty first. It is required. By our ordinance to be adopted annually, but it doesn't have to be done tonight.
Oh, okay. And when does that have to be adopted? Is there a timeframe? It's not a budget item.
No, it's an annual, it's an, Kathy, can you turn that down, please, or off? Sorry, I'm just hearing it. It's, it's distracting. It's, it's an annual requirement for our ordinance. We're supposed to do it every single year. To my knowledge, we have done it once in twenty twenty. We are trying to get to the point of updating it each year.
Is there a specific?
There's not a specific date.
Oh, okay. Just as long as we do it once a year.
Yes, okay.
April sixteenth.
Unless you want to be here today.
Is there a reason why we are dedicating a special meeting to this?
Yes, because this is something, there's items on the capital improvement plan. These are things that. You know, are really important to the township or potentially, we don't know because we haven't discussed them. And we need to, as a board, work together and discuss and then have. Matt, whatever he's been working on, share with us what, or not him, but O H M, what O H M.
Well, and Brandon, I mean, kind of the big.
Oh, yeah, and anybody else that needs to be included. And I know that, you know, planning or engineering is. Okay, regarding utilities and there's other things that they do.
So this special, your motion is, or your motion, or I guess it's, it's your request in terms of changing tonight's agenda. Is to move the capital improvement plan to, from this, tonight's agenda to a special meeting to be held on Tuesday, April sixteenth at seven P M.
Correct.
Is that subject to O H M being able to be there present? Because we really do need to have them.
Oh, yeah, I think we do need to have.
Well, he, Matt will let us know tomorrow. He'll know tomorrow about this. He thinks it's going to be good for April sixteenth and then just go from there.
Okay, so if it's not, we would try to find a time that it would work for O H M to be present?
Sure.
Okay, I would support that. Then.
Along with key people, I mean, our manager.
Yeah, obviously, obviously, everyone who would need to be a part of that conversation. I just know that. Scheduling O H M is not necessarily a gig. The other item, I believe, was K four. Am I correct?
Yes.
What is the motion?
Okay, so.
It was to remove that to a meeting, a later meeting in April?
Yeah, we would, it would be a motion to move K four to the regular meetings of April twenty third. And to request the H R Generalist to provide recommendations regarding modifications to the COLA policy. To begin in fiscal year twenty six. Additionally, we want to request an update on the timeline for implementing performance-based. Increases as supplemental to COLA increases. So. Essentially.
Presentation.
Yes, we want to, and what I discussed with Joyce was. We would like more information on comparisons to other jurisdictions. Her recommendations and Aurora's recommendations. For us for this year and the rationale for those recommendations. So just so we have a better understanding. We, as a board, had talked about implementing a plan. For merit pay based on performance reviews and none of that's mentioned here. So this is a discussion we need to have.
Okay, so, so we have.
You said fiscal year twenty six. Because that's two years off. Twenty five, maybe, is that what you're thinking?
So I, I think, I think we need to, I just think we need to talk about it. We have a policy in place. That's being applied for this year, which, you know, that I think we should discuss whether we're honoring that, but I think we also. All recognize there need to be some changes to the policy going forward. Dip separate from, but I think on everybody's minds, along with COLA, is. Performance reviews and, and just kind of getting an update of, of where we're going there. So.
I feel like we're starting to engage in deliberation and maybe that, maybe we can hold some of this for whenever we do. Yeah, so, so essentially, we have. Sort of two different motions with regard to these two agenda items for K four to move that item to our regular meeting of April twenty third. And for K five to move that item to a special meeting on Tuesday, April sixteenth at seven P M. If. If we can pull together all of the participants, if not, then we would find another time when we can presumably as soon as possible.
Okay.
Are there other changes proposed to tonight's agenda?
I have one motion to add one item. To call for a special meeting and request Township Attorney. Requested a Township Attorney regarding the N one D digital forensic report. This is something that came to light today, was developed, and I will pass it around. That would be new business.
So this would be added to new business.
Oh, today.
I mean, so what, K seven?
Uh, yeah, if we could add it as K seven, please.
Okay. And, and, oh, sorry.
Yeah, well, you already have that.
Yeah. Okay, so the changes I have noted are to move G thirteen from the consent agenda to new business as the second item after K one. To remove K four to our regular meeting of April twenty third. To move K five to a special meeting on Tuesday, April sixteenth at seven P M. And to add a new item, K seven, which is the forensic, discussion of the forensic report and. Whether to schedule a special meeting, I guess.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Okay, so several, several different points that were just distributed. Are there any other changes to tonight's agenda? If, if not, what I would suggest is that we sort of roll all of those different actions into one. Modification of tonight's agenda and approve it with voice vote. Is that acceptable?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, let's proceed with our agenda. So we have next communications to the Board of Trustees.
All are included. The board has received. All of these copies for the public.
Okay, that brings us to approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes this evening. Did I skip?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, yes, public comment. Are there any people present who would like to speak during public comment? Before we proceed, I just want to point out, if you are here for the public hearing. On the Goodrich P U D amendment, please hold your comment until we get to the public hearing. But if you've, on anything else under the purview of the board, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Jim Cameron. I was there parking at Jamal a week ago about the S A D. The tax issue. Since that time, Attorney Jim Fink, the Township Attorney contacted me. And so I'm here to thank you for having him contact me. He gave me some really good stuff to think about. We're playing telephone tag, which is unusual, but we haven't had a chance to talk yet. Personally, I'm not totally convinced, although I'm a whole lot closer than I was the last time I talked to you. But I see that you may be going forward and voting on it, and I personally, I'd like you to put that off another week or until your next meeting till twenty, the twenty third. But you don't need my approval for anything. So, I mean, you know, that's just my comment. But anyway, thank you for putting Jim Fink in touch with me, and you have a very good Township attorney.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Please come forward.
Um, I'm Denise Frost, and I'm a historian with the Sierra Casual Angel Chapter for the D A R. And you are?
I'm Elijah Shalas. I'm the immediate past president of the Huron Valley Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution.
And we wanted to just bring up a little bit of background for a presentation that Jessica is going to do later tonight. But we're here on behalf of the Popkins Cemetery over at Honey Creek and Flat Road. Because moving forward, the D A R and the S A R leading up into the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the country in twenty twenty six are trying to mark. All the American Revolutionary Patriots located in Waschau County, and there's almost twenty of them. We've got seven completed so far. And what we're doing is, most of the cemeteries, of course, are all very pretty and well cared for, but Popkins is abandoned. And we're here to offer our help and support, and we've got some, a Boy Scout troop who is very anxious to get his fingers into the dirt over there and. With his troop and help clean it up. So we're here to offer support, some. Couple pair of hands from a lot of volunteers, and we hope you guys can help too. But I wanted to give you a little background on Popkins. It's a hundred and ninety-two years old. And if you drive by it, you probably wouldn't even notice that because there's just a lot of weeds and there are a lot of broken headstones. I think you have a resident who, at some point many years ago, went through and marked them all where, who was there and where they were. So we, I've been in contact with a restoration company that can come in and repair, and he's willing to come down and take a look at it. Because it's in pretty bad shape and it might take, you know, more years to maybe get it cleaned up. But Popkins itself, the Civil War or American Revolutionary War veteran, his name is Sylvester Richmond. And he came here. Awesome. The land that it's on is abandoned. But there are thirteen people there and Richmond was born in Spencer Town, New York. And he died here in Cyo Township. He was the first person buried in that cemetery in eighteen thirty-two. The land was owned by John and Margaret Popkins, who left everything behind and moved here to Cyo Township. You know, they came down the Erie Canal right after it was opened on a steamer called the Superior. And then they got off in Detroit and they likely had to buy a horse and a cart and brought that over to Cyo Township. And this is where they landed. They had a hundred and sixty acres here. Likely Sylvester Richmond worked for them. And which was not unusual for someone to come in, work for a farmer, and then when they had enough money, they'd go buy their own land. Well, he was only here for six years and he didn't get that opportunity before he passed, but. James Popkins was friends with Judge Samuel Dexter. And he saw what Judge Dexter went through when his wife died, and he thought, I need to have some space on my property in case anybody dies. So anyways, we're here to support what Jessica is going to present. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Kathleen Brant, so resident. I want to talk about some items on the agenda specific to the budget. Item K three. That is the most bizarre presentation I have seen, ever seen of adjustments to. An existing budget. Anytime there was an adjust, an amendment, rather, was always presented for what department, what line item, what activity. And this is simply presented as a list of funds. And so you can't, cannot make head nor tails of what has been changed. Considering that Manager Parker is not here, I recommend that you postpone discussing that. And then also I want to talk about. K six, this is also about the budget. And again, this is a very bizarre presentation. There is no document that shows what you've already agreed to for adjustments. There's a summary document. Why would not the original document be adjusted so that anybody could see what's going on? And by the way, we are not a charter township. That document says we are charter township. We are not a charter township. So then specifically on the budget, I want to talk about the planning and zoning expenditures. From twenty twenty-four current year to propose for next year. The budget for those two areas is increasing seventy-two percent. And nobody said a word. Not a board member said, wow, why is that going up so much? So it's going from three hundred and sixty-five thousand. To six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. How is that justified? That it's a seventy-two percent increase. And again, related to planning and zoning. There is a deficit between the revenue collected and the consulting fees. The deficit is two hundred and seven thousand dollars. You can find the revenue in the budget, consulting review fees, a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Planning, and then the fees. Three hundred, roughly three hundred and fifty thousand plus thirty thousand. That immediately puts you in a deficit of two hundred thousand. And why is the budget going up so much just for planning? And then just an aside, Mr. Hathaway, I know you said that you're not running for supervisor. But the grapevine says you're running for another office. What office is that? I think it's trustee. And the grapevine also says that Mr. Riser is collaborating with you to run your campaigns. Would you like to comment? That's the grapevine. Somebody in your group can look at it.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
Maybe, everyone. A couple of things real quick. As Chief Hood mentioned during his presentation. Earlier this evening, I read the same article. Ann Arbor is actually looking at potentially purchasing a second rescue for transport because of the. Issues with H B A, something I'd be cognizant of, something that was brought up during the Fire Services Guidance Committee and the number of medical calls that. Will only likely increase, especially as we have approved project that'll likely begin construction soon for a senior living center for this township. I will say, I would agree with Kathleen. It was difficult to dig into the details on some of the budget adjustments. It only provided top level detail, so that was. It would be really helpful if we could have seen what and why we had to make these budget adjustments for. Certainly, they happen throughout the year. There's lots of good reasons for it. I would also just be cognizant that. There is likely to be, you know, we're out, we've all been waiting for what's going to happen with the economy. Some people say it's good, some people say it's bad. We also have to be careful where our planning and zoning revenue is going to be that hasn't been looked at in a really long time. Same thing with a lot of other. Things to think about. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ryan.
Is there anyone else present in the hall who would like to speak during public comment? Want to see if we have anyone participating remotely who would like to come?
There is Rob Pattinson.
I just want to welcome Sean McCormick to the mic tonight.
You, Rob Pattinson, Cyo Township. Supervisor Hathaway, your only response to my nine points email to the entire board a couple of weeks ago was to say that. Written comments can be an effective way to communicate with the board. Yesterday, I added another eleven points and questions. To the entire board, the supervisor has taken on a personal policy of usually ignoring public comments and seldom responding to them. I urge all of you to not let this personal policy of his become the policy of the entire board. A couple of weeks ago during closing comments, Trustee Brazil and I had a very effective and worthwhile back and forth. Until he was shut down by the supervisor. That back and forth helped me understand that Trustee Brazil is assisting Chief Hood in developing a plan for this, for the fire department. Instead of holding secret meetings with the people who sabotaged the fire S A D last time. That was a relief and shows the benefit of actually talking with residents during a meeting. I see in the agenda packet that Cyo's code enforcement officer, Sean McCormick, reports that noise complaints should be dealt with by the sheriff. Isn't the whole point of hiring your own court code enforcement officer designed to deal with the significant noise problems we have with the party? Jake breaks, et cetera. In his report, he writes that for a noise complaint, his response was, quote. Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office requested to advise to turn down, unquote. I submit that the sheriff's office has proven itself incapable of dealing with noise complaints. We need our, our Cyo code enforcement officer to act, not call. We need our, our SIO code enforcement officer to act, not call the sheriff. For tonight's budget, budget, I remind you that we're gonna spend six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars with Carlisle Wartman this year. Judging from the number of payments we make to O H M each month, I assume we must be spending the same with them. Washtenaw engineering charges added to O H M just emphasizes that SIO could save money, a lot of money, bringing planning and engineering in-house. Please let us know the G F L numbers and the status of Sheriff Gate. Four months is way too long to let such a serious accusation linger. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Jonathan?
Hi folks. Good evening. A few months ago, our supervisor, um, was found to have left his password and username logged into the computer that's being, it's used in this room right here. When he didn't log out, he left himself open to the most basic security risks that one can leave themselves open to these days, leaving yourself signed into a public computer. Because one of the trustees was trying to get a meeting going and signed on to that computer and uh, tried to log off whoever was logged on so that trustee could log on and get the user passcode so she could start the meeting. Uh, a email was sent, an old email, draft email, it doesn't really matter. There is no intent by the trustee to do any damage. Yet our supervisor, who can't resist his, an attempt to push shenanigans and sully other people's names, blow out other people's flames so his burns brighter. Take the sale out of others' sales so he can go faster. Um, spoiled little boy. He called the sheriff and filed a complaint that has been hanging out there. There's nothing to it. But he wants to use that against the trustee in this upcoming election. Oh, look at what this person did. Don't fall for it. We'll have way more information about all of this, but, uh, don't fall for this garbage. There's two choices coming up in this election. There's a bunch of wealthy landowners who don't care about you, and there's a bunch of residents who want to help. Silo Township, the choice is up to you and it's time to make that change. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Who's next?
Paula.
Yes. Hi, good, good evening. Thank you for taking my, my comments. I want to thank the two people with the cemetery. I used to walk by that daily and saw all the headstones, so that would be a really nice thing. And I'm, I'm glad Kathleen is feeling a bit better so she could use her expertise in business and finance to, uh, go over the budget. Very much appreciated. She always brings good comments and, uh, her, uh, skills are excellent. And then I have concerns watching the land preservation, not so much land preserve, parks and preserve and the planning commission. And it's kind of been brought up tonight. How much Carlisle Wartman is actually billing us for all these different plans and same thing with O H M now with the phase five of the Z E B, uh, pathway. I think it would be helpful to have those at every meeting, how much they're billing and how much they plan to build for an existing plan, uh, both for Carlisle Wartman. I know that all the solar planning, uh, planning commission wanted that mapped out. And I realize the state is trying to, um, put this whole, uh, uh, grid thing together. But, uh, you know, all these things cost a lot of money and I'm just really curious. You know, the more plans they do for us, the more they make. It's kind of like attorneys. Anyway, thanks. Have a good night. I'll be watching.
Thank you, Paula.
I respond quickly.
Sure.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Brandt, with respect to the, uh, grapevine, I have not heard those rumors. I don't know that Mr. Hathaway is running for anything. He hasn't told me that he has. I haven't heard that he has. Uh, all I know that he's not running, all I, all I, all I know that he's not running for supervisor. Uh, and I will say this, I find it humorous that with all the things I have on my plate, that I would be helping him run a campaign for dog capture. And to the extent that the grapevine has anything to say, my.
John, Scott, full stop. We're done. We're not, we're not interacting. It's public comment, not public conversation.
I just want to respond, I want to respond to an allegation that I'm running some campaign, which is absurd.
Okay, I, I don't want to get caught in, okay, okay. It is, there is, there is an opport, there is an opportunity for trustees to respond to questions.
Riser always gets to rebut what I'm saying.
Of the comment, but we don't have to engage in a local conversation. All right. Are there other responses that people would like to make?
I have a, a brief informational, um, response. We, we are going to be, um, talking on K seven about the, um, what was referenced with the email issues. And also in regard to the G F L question, I want to thank Sean McCormick, um, Rob, to your question. He does have a report here. He's handed out here in person. He'll be touching on during reports and I'll make sure to post it on the website. It's the full, um, summary of G F L complaints.
Are there copies for the table there for anybody?
I don't know. We will try to produce them if they're not, Julian. Okay, well.
I think he does. He's already prepared. Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's move along. Uh, the, that now that we're done with, um, the public comment, now it's time for approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes, uh, from the regular meeting of March fifth. Are there corrections to the draft minutes?
I have one, but if, yeah, anybody else?
No, go right ahead. What page?
Um, page seven of the minute twenty-two of the packet, which may not, you remember, but it's page seven of the minutes. Um, so it's the, it's the middle paragraph in between the bullet points.
Mm-hmm.
And it was a, okay. On the other hand, so this is the middle of the paragraph. On the other hand, the county road commission will always give a range price of lowest to highest. And neighbors make a decision as to whether or not to move forward based on whether they could bear the highest cost. And then this is where it's not clear.
Okay.
Uh, at that point, the neighbors can be charged for subsequent engineering costs. But it's not, we're not charging for engineering cost. So it's, it's as if, um, well, we're gonna decide if we want to move forward with the SAD or not. But then this is when we charge them for engineering. At least that's how it reads.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And I just want to, and that's not what we had said because.
What, what is the suggested?
Okay, yeah, I was trying, I was.
Suggestion, Will?
Well, um, about at, at the point where the S A D is approved.
Oh, I.
The neighbors can be charged for subsequent engineering.
Will be charged, yes.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I'll make that correction. Thank you.
And that, that was it. I just wanted, it's a complicated process and I just want.
Thank you, Julian.
As clear as possible.
Okay, are there other corrections? I have one minor one, just a suggestion on page fifteen. Um, at, towards the bottom, it says Flintoff knew Ms. Altmar from very active work regarding, I would say capitalize railroad and add street so that it's railroad, street, S A D. That way.
Perfect.
People, where, what it is that's being talked about. Anything else?
It's not a sad for a railroad.
Um, if there are no further corrections, is someone prepared to move adoption of?
I would move minutes.
Moved by?
Riser.
Riser, support by Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, minutes are approved.
Will, may I make a brief comment at the top of consent here?
Sure.
I just wanted, um, to thank both the representatives from D A R and, um, sorry, Elijah, good to meet you. Thank you for being here for your work on Popkins. Um, it is an item for consent tonight with no discussion. I do hope to schedule a brief presentation for a meeting in April on the initiative. It's also featured in our newsletter. There is a May fifth cleanup date, ten A M. Um, I'll be asking for everybody's help, um, to pitch in. Uh, the neighbors are supportive, really appreciate the organizations coming forward. And, um, we'll be asking for everybody's help. So thank you for your work and bringing it to the township's attention.
Is someone prepared to move adoption of the consent agenda?
I would move the consent agenda.
Moved by Riser, support by Noel. Please call a roll.
For our rules of order tonight, we're starting with Brzezo. Brzezo, Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted unanimously.
Okay. That brings us to reports. Uh, we have several written reports. We also, um, have with us our enforcement officer. I don't know why I didn't speak to your report or.
You're so self-sufficient, Sean, changing the camera even on yourself.
He runs the zoom.
I know.
Good evening. At this point, I believe everyone has received the code enforcement report.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a work in progress. It's obviously the first one I've been able to prepare, see, and submit to the board. So I'm open for any feedback and recommendations, uh, that you have. And then upon that, I do have information on G F L if you would like to discuss. And finally, if I get the opportunity, I'd do discuss the noise complaint comment, just so that I can maybe better, uh, explain why I suggested that.
Sure. Please proceed.
So for, uh, so far, um, twenty twenty-four, I have received a total of twenty-one complaints. Uh, either code zoning and or, uh, people calling in questions of like an assist. Uh, for February, there is, um, fifteen. The, I was trying to break down how I'm receiving them and also how, uh, like what category they are. So, uh, right off the bat, it's ordinance, zoning or assist, uh, citizens. February had eight ordinance, two zoning and five assistant, uh, assisting citizens. And then it breaks it down to year to date to twelve, three and six. Uh, so far online, I received a total of eight, uh, through the township website, people, uh, asking for assistance. Two or, uh, four so far for year to date through email. I received four by telephone. One person came to the lobby and I received four from other departments such as fire department, utilities, uh, zoning administrator directly, uh, submitting them to me. And then, uh, the last section under code enforcement is how many citations have been issued, uh, year to date? And I have not issued any citations yet. Still working with the positive approach of getting compliance from people. Um, I do have some things, uh, being reviewed by the prosecutor's office for review. So that very well could result in a citation, but at this point, um, I have not issued any citations. In regards to the noise complaint, what I, uh, intend in regards to that, and he mentioned, uh, the gentleman mentioned, uh, engine braking. When a semi is doing engine braking, that is not a position for a code enforcement person to be trying to enforce. That is better suited for law enforcement. That's gonna require a traffic stop. I don't have the ability to make a traffic stop. Um, I'd have to be sitting on the side of the road, actually witness the semi going by as it does. But at the same time, I can't identify who the driver is. So I wouldn't have the ability to actually enforce that. So engine brake is actually a good example. I had a person actually call this afternoon um, wanting that enforced. I actually emailed Lieutenant Hunt with the sheriff's department, advised what the situation is. He immediately responded and said, yep, that's been an ongoing issue and he will, uh, direct the deputies to, uh, enforce it as long as he wrote in that. Uh, another issue in regards to noise complaints could be like an apartment, uh, residents being in, making too much noise or a graduation party, things like that. Those are all better situated for law enforcement to go knock on the door and advise people to turn the music down or quieten the party down or where the situation is. What I can do for noise ordinance is when there's a special venue and we're receiving complaints, I can modify my work hours and try to address those things. Those are the situations where noise that I can, I'm better suited for. But the incidents that are happening twenty-four, seven, that require a uniformed officer, that is better for law enforcement, the sheriff's department to handle. And so that is why that, that's noted there for people to call. Cause if they call and try to get ahold of me, I am part-time. So chances are it's gonna be a good day or two before I get back to them and their issue is gonna get resolved like they're probably wanting it to get resolved. Yep. In regards to, uh, G F L, I did hear on the last, um, board meeting, a resident had asked on how many complaints we have received. I have requested, um, from G F L customer service, a report for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and year to date for twenty twenty-four on all customer, uh, complaints or, uh, service questions that they have received. I have not gotten it. I followed up again this afternoon or earlier this morning and asked, uh, Mary Dean with G F L for that report, cause I wanted to try to have it for today. She was trying to get E I P to get it done and sent to me. I did not receive it though. Um, but what I do have, um, and I wish we have it to post too, and there's copies there, and then I provided the board with it. Our online, uh, our township website, residents can go on and submit, uh, form, uh, for a variety of reasons. Um, through our online and those now, uh, get submitted directly to me and then I follow up with the residents. There are a variety of reasons, uh, why the people actually submit those. And so what I tried to do, I got with Mary, uh, Gillis and she broke down or sent me all the twenty twenty-two complaints and twenty-three complaints as well as twenty-four. I went through them all and tried to identify which ones were trash missed, which ones recycling, which one, uh, resident was claiming both didn't, uh, get collected. And then also who had like questioned, because it could have been billing, damaged property, they needed a new can, requesting for service, a lot of things like that. So I tried to break that all down and I also broke it down further into how many per month. Um, and that is on the report and that's what you can see up top where I have twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four down by the months. You'll see a number of one seventy-six for like twenty twenty-two. That is the total online forms that were submitted through the township website for twenty twenty-two. When you break it down further, because some residents would submit it, uh, multiple times for whatever reason, we got it a couple of times. Some, if the trash wasn't collected today, they submitted it. And then if it hadn't been collected by noon or whatever, the next day, they submitted the form again. So I took those instances where there are multiple forms or multiple smittles for the same miss collection and I counted that as one incident. Um, and so that's why down below it, you'll see, uh, a number of one sixty-nine or one forty-one for twenty twenty-three. I then, uh, broke it down, like I said, for missed trash and recycling trash, recycling yard waste, so forth. And then when you remove the other, which are questions, uh, billing, damage, you know, needing service. You end up getting down to, uh, about a hundred, uh, missed pickups for twenty twenty-two, um, and then low over a hundred for twenty twenty-three. And obviously we're still working on for twenty twenty-four. Some things to be noted though, in regards to that, that is only for those obvious people that have submitted through the township website. It doesn't indicate anything that was submitted directly to G F L. Also, when people submitted their online form, they very well could have said their whole street missed it. But I only had the one thing, so I couldn't, I don't know how many houses are on the street to say, well, actually they missed thirty. So is it a, uh, accurate representation? No, it's an accurate number of what we received though through the township website. And so my intent is hopefully to take what G F L also has and compare it to or in addition to what we have and try to come up with a better number. But, uh, at least initially to start with, this is a report for what we have received, um, through the township, uh, website. And I did ask G F L how many residents. And I did ask GFL how many residents service they are providing. And as of last week, they advised it was five thousand sixty-nine a week. And that's per, that's a single residence. So you're doing two pickups per week. So you're at a ten thousand one hundred and thirty-eight pickups a week. And that does not include any yard waste or bulk pickup. So that's just what those numbers represent.
Are there questions for Sean?
Just a quick comment. Sean, you're doing a wonderful job as our very first code enforcement officer. And I'm so glad that you're here being responsive to residents. On the engine braking, when we enacted that ordinance in twenty nineteen, we fully expected the sheriff to enforce it. We certainly have no expectation that our code enforcement officer would enforce that. That's clearly something for patrol to do. So understand and echo that. On GFL, I would expect that GFL should be able to give us their full data report. I don't know what our conversations were before, but when we were talking about that ordinance in twenty nineteen, we talked about bringing the administration in house. We said, no, we don't want to pass on that fee to our residents. We don't want to take on that headache. And so, I mean, they have a whole CMS and I would expect that as part of our contract, we should be able to get those those call level.
It is.
Complaints. Okay.
We're supposed to be getting a report and that's what I've been working on trying to get established. And I believe as of April first, we'll start getting that month's report.
Okay, great.
Was that supposed to be monthly that we receive a report?
I believe so, yes.
I'll just make one comment if I'm doing my math correctly here. So they do fifty-two pickups a year. They get sixty-seven hundred residents, right? They're running a ninety-nine point nine, almost ninety-nine point nine-nine percent efficiency rate? Well, I'm just going by these complaints, the data that I have in front of me. Let's even assume this data is doubled. That's still ninety-nine point, ninety-nine point nine-five. I don't know if that's acceptable or not. I don't know what industry standard is. I mean, it's off the cuff, my reaction is that sounds pretty good. Might not be, I don't know.
I agree. I just want, that's why I wanted to put that down there, but I'm not by any means taking away from residents complaints of my service. I guess I want to just put on the record, I by no means is minimizing the aggravation residents have when their trash isn't picked up.
It's like losing your luggage at Delta. Nobody wants to be that, I know they're ninety-nine percent efficient luggage, I just want them losing my luggage. I totally understand where you're coming from. I'm just saying as an overall performance rate, apparently the other, I think it's more not than they're missing. I think the bigger question is what are they doing about it? When you make a mistake, what's your reaction? If their actions are not returning a phone call or a bad time, that's the part that gets everybody mad. Right? At least recognize I have a challenge. Hey, you lost my luggage at Delta. Oh, let me go fix that for you right away, Mr. Customer. Hey, you didn't pick my stuff up. What are you doing now? You're going to come back and pick it up? You responded to me? I think that's what gets any, any resident here, me myself, angry is when you kind of just blow it off. And that's what I think I would address rather than their rate. I would address the, what's your response is a problem.
And that's what I've been doing. So when the residents submit these online forums, that's why I ask them, please submit it so I get it so I can follow up. I've been following up and I want to say I'll just say ninety-five percent of the time because I, but I want to say a hundred. It gets collected the next day. The glitch we ran into, and that's why I know somebody had mentioned, well, we already have thirty-five for the year. January, there were several days we had weather related delays and which GFL even prior contacted us prior to advising we are not going to be able to get to certain areas because our trucks are already sliding off the dirt roads. And that was not just for Saddle Township, that was for all their service area. They were already having to tow trucks off. So that, but nonetheless, when the residents' trash wasn't picked up on those bad weather days, that still got logged as a missed collection.
I believe that was on our website to let residents know.
Yes, we tried to, we did. We tried to at least put some kind of notification out for the residents.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
I personally, I'm very grateful to have somebody stepping in and, and you know, tackling this issue of GFL service complaints because they, prior to that, it was kind of falling to me. And I wasn't able to give it the kind of attention that you are giving it, Sean.
Well, thank you.
Hope that, you know, those people who are complaining with the service issues are appreciating the kind of stepped up game that the township is now able to provide with your, with you being on our payroll. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
You want me to stay and help with?
All good. Thanks, Sean.
Welcome to stay.
No, you're good.
All right. Are there, I know actually treasurer Palmer, that you have issued a circulated report. Would you like to speak to that?
I have. I was what I called it a draft because the end of the year is March thirty-first and there will be a final first quarter required time period report at the last meeting in March. Or I shouldn't say that. It'll be the first meeting in April. But there are copies. I made extra. They're on the table. And it's what I call the it's cash investments shows, you know, as of February twenty-ninth. Gives everybody an idea.
Thank you, Donna Fadell.
Over in Hollywood, any questions?
Thank you. Are there further comments on reports?
I just want to note, it's in the next item, but the monthly financial reports and if the accompaniment, the balance sheet and budget to actual revenue to expenditure through, it's actually through January thirty-first. I want to thank Rebecca Mahdi. Finance manager for producing these. We're on track with monthly financial reports to the board. This is a little bit of an odd one because we're also kind of doing year end.
That's right.
But, but thank thank you to Rebecca for doing that. The finance team is improving their month-end close. And so you'll see, for example, there's some missing due to and to from. So the true cash position isn't completely represented in things such as, say, the smaller road SAD funds and the general fund. But every month we're improving these reports. So thank you, Rebecca, for your work.
Further comments on reports? I would have turned to the township manager for a report. Unfortunately, Joyce had to leave because she was not feeling well, but I will speak to the transit and bus advisory committee. That group is nearing completion on its work. We added an extra meeting next week so that we can approve our report to the board by the end of March. So we'll be able to discuss it at an April meeting and hopefully there will be action to place a question on the ballot. The recommendation is to, or the committee voted to make a recommendation place an item on the August ballot, primary ballot. Or a renew and restore. We learned that this is the language to use when describing both the renewal of an existing village and the restoration of it to its original level. So that's, that is going to be the recommendation of the committee. It's not an increase. But it is a renewal of the village as it was adopted at the tax rate it was adopted at back in two thousand fifteen.
Have a, have a request of that group if possible. I know you and Joyce and Mariah are working on this. To, it'd be great if we could deliberate on that at both of our August ninth and
April.
April ninth and April twenty-third. John and Kathy, you guys please.
I do.
Stop talking. Thank you. At both our April ninth and April twenty-third meetings because we will need to take action by not later than April twenty-third unless we want to hold a special meeting. And it's a ballot proposal, I think it warrants two meetings of discussion and action.
I'm looking for a special meeting. So, okay, April twenty-third or April ninth or twenty-third? And what was the other?
My, my request is that this group be prepared to start talking about it on April ninth. So that we are actually looking at a potential ballot proposal. We haven't had a public hearing. I would suggest we have a public hearing. Our public knows very little about this. So I think the sooner we get it on the board meeting, a board meeting agenda, the better.
Okay. And also I can share that the open house was held at the farm property. That is now been listed. This is the township's historic farm at seven nine seven zero West Liberty. And the open house had, according to our Realtor, between twenty-five and thirty different groups come through during the open house. So it was very well attended and there have been scheduled showings as in addition to that. So Patrick is hopeful that we will, or optimistic, I should say, that we will get offers out of all of this attention.
Hey, well, by the way, nice job getting that place cleaned up. That was impressive. How good that looks inside. I was like, really?
I just, I just found the contractor. I did not clean it up.
Oh, okay.
I did, I did some work replacing light bulbs, but the cleaning is really, that's a
That was amazing.
Yeah, and Magda's, she did a good.
Yeah, you did a great job.
And we still have one question. We don't need to totally talk about it, but we did get a question from a member of the public about what uses would be allowed there, if any commercial uses would be allowed on that property. And I wasn't sure because it's ag and so I just, you know, would like at some point not to put Mariah on the spot now or Laura on the spot now, but I, I know I couldn't answer that question off the top of my head. So would like some education about how to properly answer that when we get that question. Because it's a little complex.
We could turn to Mariah, but what I would suggest is Mariah did, or not Mariah, but Laura, Laura Creps, I was going to say. Laura, I think is listening remotely. Laura prepared a list of all of the uses that would be permitted and that could be permitted under some sort of, what's the term?
Like a special use?
Special use, special use. The, the plan is to restrict one particular use and that is no
Right.
No kind of, you know, events.
Part of it.
Events. Yeah, I know. The, the, yes, the term party barn is used, but yes, not, not that. And no, no property divisions either. So it will remain a single parcel of five acres. So if people want that, that list, I can, I can dig up the email.
To circulate.
Yeah, yeah, I could send it around. But look, we did ask that question of our planning consultant and so we do have that list. Are there other comments or oral reports?
Oh. Yeah. Was you? Sorry. So according to statute, the director of the DDA shall provide a regular report covering the activities and financial condition of the authority. And we have, we don't receive those reports.
You don't have a director of?
You are the director as the supervisor.
I'm the chief executive.
Which means you're the director, which it's all in statute. But anyways, I would like to know what's going on with the DDA because again, it's coming back and forth that, oh, no, the township pays for this. No, the DDA pays for this. And I know there's a lot of frustration. We need to be very clear. We need to be, all be educated so we know exactly what we're doing. Because I keep hearing about the Jackson Road Boulevard, the islands. And who's to maintain that? A week, a day? And if they do anything, then we have to pay for it? But I don't think so. So, you know, we have all this money that the DDA has and we're supposed to be receiving financial reports. We're supposed to be receiving reports in general. And yeah, it's, it, it acts like it's a separate entity, which in some ways it is, but then not. So I want answers and I know there's other people that have brought this up and I'm trying to educate myself on DDA and also help residents when they contact me about it.
If I, I, I agree with you. I, I want more kind of discussion with the DDA as well. On the particular maintenance, could, could I suggest that we talk about that during the budget item?
Sure.
Some suggestions around there on that particular one, but yeah.
Well, I mean, you have any handsome questions? We did have a presentation from the DDA a few meetings ago. And we wrestled with some of the questions that you were just describing, but I, I know the DDA is also working on an update on its plan. And once that the DDA is sort of finished its own work on the plan, then that, that plan will come to the board of trustees. That might be a good opportunity for a more general discussion between the board and the DDA because at that time you would approve the DDA plan or not.
I, I agree with you. Well, I think that as these bonds are becoming, you know, if, when we pay off these bonds, there's a real question about, do we want to continue the DDA? And if so, do we want to continue that fifty percent capture? Can we justify that? Are there actual like big developments? So I think we need to have kind of the big picture discussions.
And then there's the DDA map, which I just found out that the fire department is part of the DDA and we, the DDA could be supplementing the fire department as well. Because if they're going to supplement Township Hall Park, which we haven't even talked about, then, you know, the fire department to me, I think most of their calls are along Jackson Road, except for the, the uplands.
But they're not in the plan. That would have to be modified. First plan was along the two hour border west and the roads. And then there was another time where we even changed the road thing. You have to make that change.
So they have, they have a, like a master plan that is adopted every so many years like we do.
That's what I was just referring.
Kind of, yeah. And how many years is that she's, Mariah shaking her head, yeah, so.
Yeah, they do.
How many years?
I don't know. I don't know how many years it has been. And you can amend it and it has been amended, but yes, they have a controlling, they have a controlling document.
So is it the bylaws or a master plan?
No, it, well, it's not a master plan. It's a, it's a DDA.
So that's exactly why I think everybody needs to be educated.
Well, and, and that's why I was suggesting that when the DDA finishes work, he's now engaging on his plan and brings it back to the board. That would be a good time for a discussion between the board and the DDA. And if the board chose to suggest to the DDA additional goals that aren't included in the plan at this time, that would be the time to do it. I think what Donna is saying is the original plan had very specific goals in terms of infrastructure and in terms of the Jackson Boulevard. But there's no reason why we, we can't engage in a conversation with the DDA about modifying and adding to its goals.
And does the DDA know what the DDA does?
I'm not sure what the meaning of that question, the point of that question is.
The, the statute was updated and, well, it was repealed and then updated or recreated. I don't know what the legal term is in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. So now I don't think much has changed because I didn't go. But anyway, how many people on the DDA have read the statute?
I'll quiz them next. All right. Well, let's, let's rather than engaging further in this conversation at this time, why don't we make a plan to have the DDA come when they have their plan, which should be soon. Relatively speaking, and we can have the kind of discussion that you're seeking with the members of the DDA.
And, and just one other thing, we'll be, you know, deliberating on the DDA budget tonight. We'll be having a CIP conversation. I would invite the DDA to be part of that capital planning and we'll just keep integrating every step of the process.
Yeah, we need to add DDA to the reports list too, please.
Does that fall off? It used to be on there.
I'll try to make the list more comprehensive. What this standing item is for, any reports anybody's got.
Yeah, yeah.
I could just call it that.
All right. Are there any other further comments before we move on? All right, let's do that. Let's move on. We've got other people waiting for agenda items here. The next up is our public hearing. And this is a very specific public hearing because we have proposed amendments to the PUD for the former Goodrich Theater. And do we have Laura with us?
Laura, I'm bringing you in as a panelist. Hi, Laura.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Laura. But we're at, we're at the point of the public hearing. Yes. Hi, Laura. But we're at, we're at the point of the public hearing on the Goodrich Theater PUD amendment.
Okay, well, I'll give a brief overview and I know the applicant is there with you this evening, so as you are aware, Township Board, we've been talking about uses at the Goodrich Theater site for some time. They have requested a major amendment to the theater property only. This particular PUD does encompass three parcels, two parcels directly adjacent to Jackson Road. However, the, this amendment is only for the theater portion of that PUD. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this PUD amendment uses on April twenty fourth of last year. And then recommended an amended list of uses to the Board of Trustees. On July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Trustees discussed that list of uses, had discussion, held a public hearing, and at that time chose to to have an internal subcommittee comprised of myself, the clerk, the township manager, the Planning Commission chair, and the township attorney, meet with the applicant to further refine the list of uses. And so what you have before you tonight is that refined list and it includes as a standalone development, a multifamily residential with a density of twenty-five units per acre and up to five stories in height with parking of one point five spaces per unit. A density up to thirty units per acre, up to six stories in height with parking of one point five spaces per unit with a condition that ten percent of the units be dedicated as below market rate housing with details to be agreed upon in future affordability agreement with the township. And there's some additional market rate housing information as part of this, this item. Item number two, as a standalone office, technology research park. And then a third standalone would be entertainment or indoor recreation, which may include restaurants or bar. And in my report, I inadvertently added to allow flexibility of reusing the existing building. This is a holdover from the Planning Commission's comments last April. This does not reflect what we had agreed upon in the letter received by Atkins. So I just want to mark that as, if you could strike that, that was my error.
Laura, so we know exactly where you're at. Where do we strike?
Um, under standalone, number three, entertainment, indoor recreation, which may include restaurants, bar, period.
Most important place to make that change is in the motion.
Yes. And then as part of a mixed use, sorry, and then as part of a mixed use, which would include two or more of the above mentioned, that I already mentioned standalone uses, we would also allow for retail, grocery, medical office or dental office, and restaurants, bars with a maximum of one hundred and twenty-five seats. And so, you know, our internal subcommittee met with the applicant over, oh, man, probably three or four meetings. In addition to that, we did meet with neighboring property owners a couple of times to talk about their concerns. I did, when I received this list, refined list from Atkins Properties, share the one hundred and twenty-five feet seat maximum with the neighbors. That's down from, I think, two fifty or three hundred seats that was originally proposed in the, in the original list of uses. I did a little research today. Just as a, just to give you some frame of reference when you talk about seats in a restaurant. Culvers has eighty-six seats inside. The new Panera Bread has one hundred and thirty-six seats. Slim Chickens, that we're gonna talk about, the next, the second new business or the first new business item, is a drive-through use, fast food, and it has forty-nine seats inside. And I had the fire marshal visit Carlisle Grill today, the neighboring property, and they have approximately a hundred and eighty seats. Just to give you a frame of reference, what a hundred and twenty-five seats means for a restaurant use. You're welcome. I, my, my thanks to Brandon Sears, the fire marshal, who helped me with that. I appreciate his hard work, too. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer any further questions. Any of you have, I know the applicant also is there and can speak to any questions or concerns you might have on, on their side.
Well, you would like to come forward. Do you have any brief comment that you would like to make? And then what I'd like to do is open up the public hearing to allow members of the public to speak. And then if the board at that point has questions or deliberation, then we can, we can move into that.
Thank you. Josh Bardini with Atkins Management, one fifty West Second Street, Royal Oak. Laura's summary is accurate. We've been at this for roughly two and a half years. So our hope tonight is to get, to, to have a vote in action to approve this list so that we can market the property for whatever these uses are. I can tell you that we've spent a lot of time with the subcommittee and as Laura mentioned, we met with the neighbors. We've also spent prior to that a lot of time with the Planning Commission. And since the Planning Commission's approval at that level and recommendation to you all, this list has been further refined. There's been several uses that have been removed and several things that have been constrained, all of which we're in agreement with. And I would ask that tonight you guys take action to approve the list as presented. Thank you.
With that, I'd like to.
Questions for them?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, no, there'll be an opportunity for deliberation and, and discussion and questions by the board. So at, what I'd like to do now, at eight twenty-two, I'd like to open the public hearing on the proposed amendment to the Goodrich PUD and invite members of the public who would like to speak. We'll start with those who are present in the hall and then those who are participating remotely. And because this is a public hearing, each individual is allotted up to five minutes. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak during the public hearing on the Goodrich Theater PUD amendment?
Hello, everybody. My name is Costa Butzakai. Most of you know me as Gus. I, I welcome the project on the PUD that we all belong to, to be developed. Definitely being a, what it is now is not a good thing for anybody. However, when we came along and we invested, me and, when I said we and, and the restaurant, with John Romani's several million dollars, we invested that because of the theaters, the traffic the theater is gonna bring along. And we talked to the township. Township welcomed us and says, come aboard. Have the theater been a, a retail center? How would I have spent millions to put a retail center there? And I don't believe if at the time, we, both of us proposed two theaters for that theater, it would have been turned down. We've never been fair for us to compete without the PUD. Right now, we, we go along with all the proposals that Atkins Properties has made. I don't believe that we should allow the one hundred and twenty-five seat restaurant because we, we have an issue with the parking as it is right, right now. So that's why we said there should be fifty or seventy-five seats. How it came along to one hundred and twenty-five as a proposal, I would imagine was from Atkins Properties or OHM. So is it fair for us to say right now that it's okay for Atkins Properties, being a large developer, to build something on the other side that is gonna hurt us and perhaps put us out of business? It's not fair. How do we deserve that, being on the, being on the PUD? I believe that they have many, many uses they can use. And, and from so many types of establishments, food establishments, small to retail, to everything they propose. But to, we lived there when it was theaters and it was tough, you know, with the parking that we had. And now, if we have an entertainment center with, with a, with a restaurant inside and additional restaurants up to one hundred and twenty-five seats, what are we doing? You're, you're asking us on the PUD to basically cut our own throat. Okay? I mean, because none of us would have invested that kind of money and, and did all this work and, and, and paid all our dues all, all along and taxes. And right now, you're asking us to say hello to the competition and, and come along. I believe that we agreed, like I said before, to pretty much all of them. We're welcome. We like to work with them. And if it's up to me, I'll work with them as much as I can. There's no question about it. But I would like you to think it's unfair for us to create more trouble for us. You know, how would it have been, like I said before, how would it have been fair if we proposed the same thing they did? And, and if, if it was all the restaurants with the back of Atkins Properties on the property that weren't there before us, if it was all the restaurants, large restaurants, a retail center, I don't believe either one of us would, would have invested five or ten million dollars upfront to do what we did. So I think that you should give it a thought, that we do, we do need that to go forward and be developed. There's no question about it. And love to work with them every which way possible, like I've, I've said all along, but and that's the only sticking point is the parking and the, the restaurants, which they, they do consume a lot of parking. And I have enough buildings with restaurants on Jackson Road and, and on Chelsea, so I do, I do understand what they use. And we're the ones that lived all along with the parking when the theaters were there for, for twenty-some years. So I would appreciate your thoughts and I would appreciate to look up, look up, look up for us as well. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Romani and I own Carlisle Grill. We are in business since two thousand and five, so almost twenty years. I'll tell you the little story how it started. Early two thousand, the leaders of the township, they, they engaged me and they suggested that this is a good location to open the restaurant. At that time, there was only another freestanding restaurant at, at its last leg. There were a lot of national chains that they look at the site, they thought twice, and then they denied the, they, they didn't want to invest. They foresaw problems with parking, maybe with area. So I did, with all the negatives that existed, I thought it was a good idea for me to risk, especially for the fact that I was already right next to the theater. So if it was a TGI Fridays, J. Alexander's, Texas Steakhouse, I wouldn't do that. I, 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 I wouldn't do that. And I think we did good, both me and Gus, for the township. I, I, I want to think that I provide a good restaurant and it runs well and, and provide the service. But I would say with all honesty, if I come to you in front of you and, and I would ask you no restaurants at all, it wouldn't be unreasonable based of how we got into the business. But we, I'm, I'm not unreasonable. I, I, we like to compromise and we want that site to be developed because it would be win-win for, for Atkins because it, it doesn't do any good for a property, eleven acres, to, to stand, to stay the way it is. I suggested and I proposed fifty. Laura, I think, sent an email about and, and suggested something, a hundred twenty-five. I would like to help, I would like you to help me and find a compromise. I would agree at seventy-five or two restaurants, forty seats, that it would be serviced. I would, I would say Atkins has, is almost ready to be approved for a hundred things, for a hundred uses. But they're asking for a hundred one. I'm asking you to be reasonable with us and approve if you have to approve no more than seventy-five seat restaurants. Any, any questions for me? All right.
Thank you, Josh.
I'm Jim Cameron. I don't own a restaurant and I'm not here to talk about taxes. I'm here as a historical artifact. Kathy reminded me that I, when we were talking earlier, that I was on the board some twenty-some years ago. But it happened to be at the time that we approved Carlisle and approved the theaters. Mr. Romani is correct that, that we did encourage him to come in and, and put in a restaurant. And, and we told him that the restaurant would be there. Unfortunately, the restaurant, or the, I'm not, not the restaurant, the theaters. Unfortunately, the theaters are gone. And, and yes, something needs to be done with that property. I mean, it's just sitting there. My concern is this. Well, let, let me say this first. At least in, in, in terms of Carlisle, that restaurant is one of the premier restaurants in Scioto Township on Jackson Road. It's an anchor. Mr. Romani has built that up from nothing. He built the restaurant. He stuck with it through COVID. It's still alive and vibrant. I'm sure you've all eaten there. If you haven't, you should. And I think we owe a certain amount of loyalty to him in terms of what he's done. And, 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 and the conditions on which he put in that restaurant and built it in. And here's, here's a concern of mine. I, my totally unscientific, you know, drive up and down the street numbers are that, that, there's somewhere north of fourteen restaurants within a mile or a mile and a half of here. And I worry about saturation. What I've listened to tonight, I, I thought there was only gonna be one restaurant allowed. Now it sounds like there's gonna be two. And, and I would certainly hope that at the very least, the number of seats for those two restaurants, two restaurants would be limited more than it is. I don't know whether you've seen a feasibility study. I don't know whether one was done. I mean, I would assume the developer did one before they decided to come in here and do all of this. I don't know what the feasibility study says. But from a guy who drives up and down Jackson and sees a lot of restaurants and, and feels a certain amount of loyalty to our restaurant tours that are here, I'd really encourage the board to think seriously about the number of, of other seats that they would allow, especially if there's gonna be two restaurants. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
This conversation has been very interesting. I'm glad for the historical perspective. I look at this document for the PUD and it seems to me that it does not at all limit the number of restaurants or bars. It says two or more, if you look at the document, of these categories above. And it doesn't seem reasonable to give a newcomer advantage compared to somebody that's organizations and people that have invested in a, are part, are going to a part of the community. The other thing, I want you to look at that because it does not let, limit at all. And it looks like in, in one of those unlimited restaurants could have a hundred and twenty-five seats. Which it certainly is obvious that parking would be a huge problem. And as I made public comment previously, the developer would consider underground parking or some. The developer would consider underground parking or some way to stack as a uh a structure. But it is inconsiderate for the current uh current owners. The other thing that I noticed about this. Is that this is a major amendment to a PUD. However, it came about that they had a single use, that was the agreement. That's what the the developer, the owners agreed to. That's what the township agreed to. Now we're entertaining a major amendment to the PUD. Potentially putting in three to five stories of building. And there's absolutely no consideration for public benefit. To the township. And what I mean by that is. We have to support those buildings from our fire department. Isn't it reasonable that there should be a public benefit with the modification of this PUD? And there's no consideration of it. And I, and during the plan, a planning meeting, I found it disturbing that there was a discussion. About public benefit and it's been hammered to this board that you are responsible for defining the public benefit. And what I found disturbing is it was announced in the planning committee that during pre-application. Is when uh public benefits are determined and the attendees are. Our planning consultant, um, our planning. Chairperson, the supervisor and our attorney. Well, first of all, there's no statutory duties for the supervisor to be involved in planning activities. But how did that group decide that they get to determine public benefits? I think that's outrageous. Okay, that's a side topic, but it is absolutely um. Tied to this development that. The developer wants us to make it possible for them to make money. If they can't consider contributions for our infrastructure. Then I think we should take a hard stance and say, well, if you can't do that. Then we cannot agree to change the PUD. And you're stuck with a theater. Unfortunately, I think we give away too much. Our planning commission gives away too much to developers. And. We have infrastructure that we're talking, how do we pay for it? How do we pay for it? So I don't want the current owners to be disadvantaged. And I want a fair um reckoning of the. What the township is going to incur for that development. It'll be traffic, it will be uh fire. Uh, I'm sure I've missed something. It'll be water and sewer. Then how can they get a free ride? Uh, just because, oh, you had a PUD, you want to change it? Sure, change it. I don't agree with that. Thank you for your time.
I I have a minute and thirteen left. I just want to make one comment. I'm going to address the attorney panel over here. Uh, if indeed this doesn't have limit, the PUD does not have limiting language. To limit this to the two potential restaurants, it should be. Um, and and so I would, I would ask that uh that language be put in the PUD before it's approved and maybe brought back on the twenty-third.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Sorry, last person that's here that we need to go online. Um. Good evening. Uh, thank you for the applicant coming. Thank you to the board. A couple of uh points that I'll, I'll follow up on and a couple of questions I'll ask of the board and some of our consultants. Ultimately, I would ask the following. Uh, I think that this development will be a good thing for Siobhan Township. I don't know when the applicant will be able to find whomever will ultimately.
Can I ask that you take the conversation outside? It's too hard to.
Yes, okay. The mic search is too good in here. Go ahead, Ryan.
I I was gonna say, ultimately, whenever the applicant does get someone to want to develop the site. The site plan is going to be extremely important. Ultimately, that's not what we're talking about tonight, but as Gus and John both touched on. Uh, I patronize businesses that in Gus's building as well as the John's restaurant quite often and. Parking can already be a challenge if we add hundreds of more people, especially if that building is placed in a similar location to where it is today. That's going to make parking very challenging. Uh. The other thing I would ask, I I do recall some of the other public meetings that have been held. The number of people in the restaurant being closer to what John ultimately asked for, seventy-five. I do realize that there's differing numbers for different types of restaurants and different concepts. That's what it is. I I would also ask, this might be something that Laura or Mariah knows. What the original development agreement said as far as whether the township. Whether this is the opportunity for the township to negotiate public benefit or if that's already been settled and done. Because it was done once on the person. I don't know. That's that's a legal question. Uh, the other things to think about, ultimately, whether he uses the applicant put forward, that's. Really going to be a great thing for economic development of the township. Is attainable, affordable workforce style housing on that location with increased density. It's in our water and sewer district. It makes sense. Especially if we're going to have additional transit options coming through that corridor. There's a lot of businesses in this area that need people to come work. And having something where it's affordable, attainable housing, especially because it would reduce the amount of vehicles that would be present on that site, would be massive. I don't know how reasonable this is for the applicant and or this board, but. Ann Arbor, of course, has its green belt program since there's no land left to really buy an Ann Arbor for anyone to purchase land in Siobhan and other communities. They've been looking to do things for affordable, attainable housing. Is there an opportunity for them to work? Together with someone on the site to make that a reality, especially given the location and the transit corridor. Back into Ann Arbor and really be a win-win for everybody. Ultimately, I think it's going to end up as one over five or one over four, one over three, where there'd be some retail, some restaurants, some other uses mixed into the site. But it would be the best thing for our tax base. It'd be the best thing for residents. And ultimately be the best thing for the applicant because they get their money back out of the site and they move on to run the rest of their business. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, Ryan. Y'all should be.
Is there anyone else present? No, I guess everyone here has spoken now except Chief. All right, um, please, let's go to the people participating remotely.
Um, shorting. Um, we're gonna start with Paula, followed by Rob, but um first, Will, I want to take this opportunity. Um, I got. A comment that there was somebody missed earlier in public comment inadvertently, so I just want to state the public comment. Um, for the record, Peter Davis, um, raised my hand, was not recognized, had a friendly comment, Sean's report, your meetings are far too long. Um, because of his presentation, which was too important to be delivered orally, if he was reading it, he should have handed it out and just mentioned the highlights. Those kinds of reports should never ever be oral, too important and therefore in writing. I'm sorry, but I'm totally disgusted. Contrast this with the three-minute public comments, which are far more important. You may and should read this into the record, Peter. Next up is Paula Globerson, followed by Rob Pattinson. Paula.
Yeah, uh, resident in Siobhan since um eighty-seven. And I want to say, I don't think we should do anything with that site. That's going to disadvantage uh Carlisle Grill and the other restaurants. We have a saturation of restaurants. We're going to have the Mexican restaurant. Uh, Sam Hill just opened up. And I'd like to see a totally different concept in there. But number two. Uh, I think utilities. If you're going to start be putting in uh massive housing apartments, what is that going to do to our water main? So are we just going to give the PUD away for a few EV chargers? And we have all these infrastructure needs. I'm on what city water and sewer and I I. I know John Reiser, Kathy Noah are on sewer and water. And it's very expensive. You'll be negotiating, so you're going to have that hotel that. That wasn't supposed to go to the zoning. They want to have a higher um height and more rooms. What is that going to do to our water and sewer, whatever goes in there? And secondly, so I think whoever, who, who's ever doing the development, they're going to have to do something with uh the sewer line, water and sewer lines. And and thirdly. I I'm really personally, if we're going to start talking about being disgusted, I'm disgusted with the planning commission. One person runs the show there for the most part. And a supervisor made sure that. Uh, no one that would ask hard questions was on that planning commission. And I'll be glad to see some of those appointments changed, but the whole PUD concept. Has been bastardized and I know you, they had a committee supposed to be doing it. But it hasn't been good. And I think you should look to other communities, like I was up in um Santa Fe. Uh, even St. Joe's, Michigan. They have these large market with uh, we we don't even have a place for a farmer's market. And we keep talking about sustainability. I never go to the Ann Arbor farmers market anymore. Anyway, I. My whole feeling is do not disadvantage people who brought so so much good. Um, to Ann Arbor. I go to Carlisle's. I go to Gus's. And um, you know, the restaurant business is a tough business. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Next up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Jan Culbertson. Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Siobhan Township. A PUD is supposed to be a durable, strong, long-term contract between the township and business owners. The Goodrich PUD is unusual in that there are at least seven different business owners who took part in this contract. There are only three restaurants that have a long history in Siobhan and survived COVID. Those are Baxter's Pie Company, Metzger's and the Carlisle Grill. Dismantling the PUD agreement for the benefit of one business owner at the expense of the other business owners is extremely unfair. And leaves Siobhan wide open to lawsuits. I suggest. This proposal be tabled until the board can have a working session with all of the business owners associated with the Goodrich PUD. I am uncomfortable with the small group of the township manager, supervisor, clerk, attorney, planner and planning commission chair. Making the decision about this applicant. This is a subject that should be discussed in public with the entire board, the applicant and all of the business owners at a working session. So that a fair compromise can be reached. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Jan Culbertson. Jan.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Jan Culbertson, uh, planning commission chair, and I am here just to um support um. The uh PUD proposal. Uh, when the planning commission uh discussed this. Uh, the goals were to uh ensure that the PUD remained an active site and that the uses would contribute to placemaking. Um, and that there would be maximum potential for a a synergy with the existing uses. I don't think anyone um really talked about having multiple restaurants, so that could be something that. Uh, the the uh trustees could identify um more clearly in in this proposal. Um, and I really appreciate in the planning commission dialogue, we really pressed for um multifamily and higher density and. Um, affordable housing, and I think this proposal incentivizes that, and I really want to thank uh Clerk Flintoff. For bringing some of those options to the table. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jan. I see one more comment, Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan?
Hey, uh, yeah, I just want to say, everybody keeps saying we have too many restaurants in Siobhan Township. And uh with uh present company excluded, I think is how I say that. We have a a dearth good, uh, we have a lot of restaurants. We don't have a lot of good ones. Um, and so we should probably, uh, as as others have suggested. Uh, lean into those that have been solid foundations here in Siobhan. And uh I would also highly recommend the meat pies at Base Camp if you're interested in that kind of thing. They're awesome. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, I see, I see one more here from Rob Pattinson, but Rob, you've already spoken. So no more. People for the public hearing.
Okay. Um, in that case. I would like to close the public hearing on the PUD amendment for the Goodrich Theater at eight fifty. Um, and at this time turn to uh the board of trustees for deliberation. If there are questions um for the applicant or for um our planning consultant, Laura Krebs, who I assume is still online. Um, then um we could, we could, you can pose those questions or just simply make comments uh yourself.
Well, I'd like to make a comment if I may.
Sure.
The board. So, you know, as a business owner. You know, I I I know where John's coming from, so so a couple of things I want to address. Number one. The man came here twenty years ago, took a risk, predicated everything. It's a destination restaurant. It's not a restaurant downtown Ann Arbor. Where you've got walk-by traffic. You have to want to drive there. He was predating that decision, making millions, millions of dollars, five to ten million dollars, whatever that number was, predicated that there was going to be a theater there. So so, and again, there was a lot of benefit to that, to the him and and making that. Decision for us, right? It brings tax revenue, it brings income, it raises the quality of the restaurants. I I agree with Mr. Greenberg. Very few quality restaurants in in Siobhan, maybe, yeah. Uh, but that's certainly one of them. So I I certainly agree with that. I would recommend that, you know, we cut the, that it is limited to one restaurant. We cut it to sixty-three seats, that's half, roughly half. Uh, there's other, certainly many of other options that they propose that are open to that, to that venue. I think the benefit of occupancy. Uh, it supersedes, you know, whether we need to get, you know, other extracted benefits. We get it, we get a tax benefit from that. We get the benefit of occupancy. It does raise the bar of all the other, other uh. Uh, businesses that surround. So that would be Mark's view of the world anyways. I think that'd be. Fair for for uh, fair for the the existing ownership and fair for the new owners as well, because we want to recommend, we want to open up the doors to to new businesses as well.
Just a process point. Uh, thank you. Process point, Will. Um, I'm wondering if we could move from. If we're, we feel ready to move from the public hearing into this actually deliberating.
We've closed the public hearing.
I'm sorry, you're.
Do I get a chance to respond to some of this? Because I, I think it would be helpful. Well, I, I, I don't know at what time. I'm just saying, whatever. I I I think uh what I would suggest is that, yes, we move to the next agenda item, which is the consideration of the PUD amendment itself. And then if you would like an opportunity, typically when we have um someone, a developer. Coming for an agenda item like such as this, they have an opportunity to speak, you can speak.
We'll have questions too.
Yeah.
But I do approve my PUD, by the way. I approve it just with that modification.
All right, so so we closed the public hearing. I I suggest that we we acknowledge that we have now moved on to item J one, I believe.
Yeah.
And um, I I before we move um to offer you an opportunity to speak, Josh, um, I was going to ask Mariah, um, if I might. If we were to modify the motion. Um, to accomplish what uh Trustee Brazil has said. Um, am I correct that it would be in the final bullet point? Under as part of mixed use, where it talks about the maximum. Seats.
Yep.
And would would it also modify, would it serve the purpose of. Reducing the potential for multiple restaurants if we said with a total maximum of whatever number, sixty-three seats?
I'm sorry, I don't have the model motion. I kind of can't get to it at the moment.
Well, I I think, I sense there's sort of two potential issues here. One is the number of seats and one is the number of restaurants.
Right, right.
And and so I'm trying, I was trying, I I wanted to pose a question to you. Maybe maybe you want to take a second to look through them. The motion is very long.
Yes.
So maybe you want to take a second to look through it, but I think those are two issues that I sense the board. Um, if I'm correct, sensing the mood of the board, the board would be interested in is both uh limiting the number of seats and limiting the number of restaurants.
And the rest of us, you know, we delivering.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so why don't I call on Trustee Noel and then do you want to speak?
Are we gonna, yeah, but are we going around or does everybody have something to say?
Just make sure that everyone has a turn. We don't have to go around the room.
When do we hear from him? Before or?
Well, why don't we get our, if there's questions or comments out on the table, then I think we could turn to Josh and then he can respond to everything. There's just been some historical stuff that's not factual, so I'd like to be able to acknowledge or talk about that. Sure, what, is that okay? Uh, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and give you a turn and then we'll go to Trustee. I think some of it will answer some.
I think some of it will answer some of the questions.
Okay.
Alright, um first off, the uh P U D that's in place, we're not amending the P U D for the other two units. There's three units in this property. We're only asking to amend unit one, which is our property. The movie theater was there first, and the other properties came later. In that vein, when site plans were approved for the movie theater, which was there first, and then the adjoining or adjacent properties, I'm sorry, um site plan approval was granted, parking requirements were met. And inside of the P U or inside of the condo that's there, the three units, there is uh bylaws and there are parking arrangements. Nothing has changed and nothing will change to that respect. When we go forward, hopefully with what you all can approve, we still are subject to coming back to Planning Commission, and then I forget in this community of Planning Commission for site plan approval goes to the board or not, but we still have to come back through with site site plan and site plan approval.
Site plan approval still comes to the board.
Which at that time, if parking requirements are not satisfactory, that still can be addressed. So I want to make sure we understand that. Secondly, when the P U D was granted, the P U D was granted for a singular use with this movie theater first. If you recall, when we started down this process, we asked to go back to underlying zoning of which there are certain uses that are permissible, and we were told you can't do that. The underlying zoning is now gone. So the only way to work our way forward from an obsolete building is to come through with a major up P U D amendment, but given that there was only one use, it's considered a major amendment. So all we're doing is following the process that's been laid out to us. In addition to that, we don't have a market study done, because I can't go do a market study because I don't know what I can tell the consultants to look for. Okay, so third, as far as covered or structured parking, that is that is not a consideration of our of ours right now, because our parking right now works per count, and we assume it will in the future depending on what the uses are. Underground or covered parking is is, as you all know, very expensive. If it could work, we'll analyze that. But sitting here today, not having a site plan to to be able to compile and look at, I I I don't know if that will work. Um the parking, the issue in regards to the uh restaurant and the number versus the uh number of seats, I'm it it sounds like to me there's an issue of potentially parking and competition and the number of units or restaurants and the number of seats. Okay? If you recall, we started this process with asking for three hundred seats. And as an example, because we have multiple developments with multiple different types of um um retail and or restaurants, I'm going to give you some examples of normal seating counts for restaurants. If you talk about just this flat, straightforward, typical Applebee's, that's anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and fifty seats. If you talk about a Culver's, I know there was one mention of one, that's on the smaller side. They're usually between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five. A Chili's, for example, is a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty. IHOP for breakfast, one twenty to two hundred, depending on what size building. Cracker Barrel, we're off the freeway, a hundred and seventy to two hundred and seventy. BJ's Steakhouse or BJ's Brewery, that is, you know, something that's going across the Midwest, two hundred and fifty seats. Outback Steakhouse, two hundred seats. So what I'm trying to show you show is that we started with three hundred to keep options open. We've went down more than half in this last letter that we proposed to one hundred and twenty-five. When you talk about fifty seats or sixty seats, you're talking about a drive-through, fast casual um setting, which this is not. It's not on the road. Okay? And I don't know that you guys would approve drive-throughs in that situation. But the problem is, it has to work feasibility-wise, and a drive-through or a McDonald's or something that needs that, some of the even sandwich shops these days, that that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for a restaurant. And as part of this, when we started, the restaurant concept is part of only if it's a mixed-use development or two or more of the uses. And the comment about utilities, we have went through the discussion of utilities with the Planning Commission, this body, subcommittee, we've talked to all the consultants that work for the township, and the utility side of the question has been answered by them and are in the minutes. So if we need to go back to that, we can, but I don't think we should need to do that. All we're saying is we have compromised what we've what we've put forward from the planning through this body, and in this last round, we've compromised yet again on the seat counts. We cannot go lower than that because we're already lower than a standard restaurant.
Trustee Noel.
Um I agree that this site should be put to meaningful use. However, we can't ignore the businesses in the area around the current Goodrich Theater site. Um when Carlisle was originally built, John Romanus made business decisions based on the fact that a movie theater was to occupy the site across the parking lot from his future restaurant. As a board, we have to consider multiple variables. I mean, I hear what you're saying as a potential developer, and maybe you would come down some, but I'm going to propose that we lower the number to sixty seats. And I think you need to be aware that this this is a change for the business owners who are already there and who made business decisions based on representations to them from the township at that time. So I'm supportive of decreasing the restaurant seating down to, I want to say sixty seats. It sounded like John Romanus was a little bit flexible and could say seventy. And we need to be very clear in the motion that this would be the total number of seats for that easy site. So I the wording in our packet materials is a little bit confusing because it implies that there could be, it's vague on the one hundred and twenty-five seats for bars and restaurants. So it is vague wording. There are many other restaurants in the area. Um we've got the Session Room across the street, Weber's, Savah, Holmes Brewery. Um I just think we have to weigh the considerations that have been presented here, and the current owners present a compelling argument that we should keep the number of seats at a lower number than one twenty-five. So I'm going to propose a lower number, sixty to seventy, and that we specify in our written language that that's the total number of restaurant seats for the site, whether it's one restaurant or two.
The number, okay.
Yeah.
Trustee Carrie?
Well, okay, well, I did read through this. I have not read the H O A agreement, so I don't know what that is about, and you did mention something about there's parking, specific parking language in that.
Yes.
And this. Okay, so let's at least we're clear on that for now. I don't know how many you have. Um so when I read through this, it almost seemed to me that this is going to be multifamily residential, and then as part of a mixed use, two or more of the above, the office technology and then entertainment, indoor recreation. So that means, and you may not be the one to answer this.
I can, I can.
Okay, so this would be multifamily residential and then also office technology, entertainment.
Well, the potential is one potential use, but not that it doesn't.
Okay, so this is why it's confusing to read for me, because and then it says as part of a mixed use, which is categorized as including two or one of the above, but then it lists four other things underneath. So underneath, I'm assuming can be standalone?
No, above is standalone.
There's three.
It says in the in the letter, it says as standalone development, number one is multifamily, number two would be office research, and number three would be in entertainment and indoor indoor recreation. They could be standalone.
Okay, so that should have said including two or more below. Or to include.
We'd have to do two or more above to get the below.
Right. Oh, okay, got it now. It's so I was just visioning envisioning that, okay, this is going to be multi-unit housing, and then there would be restaurants or something else underneath it.
Possibly, but it might not be underneath it. It might be multi-unit housing with a standalone restaurant.
There's enough room for that.
It might be, but I can't go do anything because I don't have anything proved.
Right, so and then then it comes back to parking, because here, if it's two hundred and fifty, so twenty-five units per acre, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-five units per acre and up to five stories, so that would be two hundred and fifty um units, then up to six stories would be three hundred units with one and a half spaces per unit for parking. But then if we have a standalone restaurant or other, I'm concerned about the parking.
And that's what I thought their concern is, and what I'm what I'm saying is, whatever we do, whatever you approve, we still have to prove it outside plan wise. So in your analysis, twenty-five per acre or ten acres, if we did that, the likelihood of doing another use would be pretty much minimal. But if we said instead of doing twenty-five, because it's up to, if we did ten, fifteen, twenty per acre, and we have the ten acres, then there might be room for an additional use. And what we're saying is, we're developers. We know what has to be done for parking, because that's the biggest complaint for everybody. We understand what he's saying, what they're saying. We do, but we would have to site plan that, get your approval, and the way that the bylaws read right now is is that everybody is supposed to park as close as they can to their own building, but everybody got their own site plan approved.
Yeah, I understand that as well. Okay.
So we wouldn't do anything to to detriment them or us.
Yeah, I know, but regarding the hundred and twenty-five seats, and I remember when it was three hundred and then in somebody's email or whatever, they said two hundred and twenty-five. But I remember from the conversation uh when it came in front, I don't know when it was, but I remember fifty.
Mm-hmm.
That's what they that's what.
That's what they proposed.
Okay.
We proposed m- more than this, and when we sat with the subcommittee and we met with them, we listened, we said, okay, and we reduced our request by over half. And I think the use, the typical sizes and parking or seat counts were just the typical restaurants that you all would have been to before are are more, most of them are more than a hundred and twenty-five. So we're already starting lower than what one of those typical standalone restaurants would be. And that's why we're sitting here saying sixty can't work for us.
Okay, just just to make, there's tons of restaurants down in downtown Ann Arbor, you have sixty seats your lives and that are very successful. So that's just not a big statement.
In downtown Ann Arbor, downtown Ann Arbor, like you just said, in a walking community, yes.
There are restaurants I've been to that are standalone that have less than sixty seats that are very successful that I go to that are high-end restaurants. That's just simply just not true.
But when you when you drive down a freeway, okay, you're typically.
You're like going to a destination restaurant, just like John's, you're going to a destination restaurant, right? He made that huge investment to make a destination restaurant.
Right, no, no, you mean a theater that was there first.
Think about this, if it's just a single restaurant and it's only sixty seats, that could be a potential, right, that it could be just one restaurant, sixty seats.
Yeah, of course.
And that's it for the whole.
Sure, because it could be up up.
Right.
Rather than getting into back and forth about the seats, I I think um good point, we we should make sure that everyone on the board has a chance to be a part of the deliberation.
Okay, I still have another question.
Okay, please, please proceed.
So this has to do with the public benefit, and I know that this is a major amendment. And also, so you plan on you you plan on selling this or having somebody else come in and build, let's say, the housing?
Not necessarily.
Are you making that? Okay, so let's say it is housing and yeah, so this is going to put um stress especially on our fire department. And I know if this was a um you had a P U D in the beginning, like I don't know how many years ago. I'm sorry, it wasn't around then. Um and then there was community benefits at that time, but now this is a major, and if it's housing, we don't have a ladder truck, you know, we are already in, but this is and and this is going to tax our, and I don't mean taxes in money, but it's going to um take away from what we need for our residents now. So and I know that this was discussed as far as this housing. So I don't understand why there isn't a public benefit, and maybe it's at a different time when we do, when you know exactly what we're going, you're going to do. I don't know. And this may not even be a question for you. This may be a question for.
I don't think it's a question for the developer.
It's it's not a question for tonight for sure, but I I think you've made your point. Um and so have the folks who spoke during public comment about community benefits.
Well, it is an important question.
Mm-hmm.
And this whole issue of community benefit has been one that we've struggled with, both the board and the Planning Commission. So I think what she's asking is, is there more, is there potential to for a contribution to the fire department?
Right, right. Will's point, until you know what the property is and what they're going to do with it, I just think that's a good good question. I just think it's a premature question until there's.
Could be.
Yeah, that's all I'm suggesting.
What I would say is the issue's been raised both by members of the public and by members of the board. It's not a question we're going to resolve this evening. Um are there other members of the board who would like to speak? Um I think.
My my three points are public benefit, existing restaurant, and REUs. So if there's to be a high-rise uh that's either five or six stories high, um is is that such that there should be additional public benefit, community benefits? Uh and I'm, you know, obviously, we we don't fight fires on a five or six-story basis now, so I don't know what Chief Hood thinks he needs to do that, whether it's uh more hydrants or if it's a ladder truck uh or something. So is there an opportunity or is it appropriate to exact, to ask for um additional uh uh public benefit, community benefit, if if there's that those high-rise structures? Second is the REUs. If there's a five-story or a six-story, what's the REUs? And I don't know if we have O H M or Laura Krebs knows, but what's the REU?
Matt is available if you would.
What's the REUs currently for a for a um uh theater? And what would the REUs be for a five or six-story? And are we gonna, you know, use them all here? And so maybe, I don't know what the public benefit should be. Should it be more water, more sewer? Should it be fire, combination? So that's the question I have. And I I have, you know, existing restaurant, I I think that Carlisle Grill is a gem. I think Session Room and Holmes, a campus on that side of town are destination areas, and you know, I uh I don't want to undermine what Carlisle has or nor what the the other retail spots uh that are that are nearby. I don't know if it's a cigar place or if it's the ski place or a theater place and all those those places there. So so I I appreciate that you may have been there first, but they put a restaurant in betwixt a bowling alley, there's now another car dealership, and 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 a theater, and with a certain expectation that that they'd have the patrons from those adjacent facilities, and that the landscape is changing, and I don't want to leave them out in the litter. So I'm sensitive to to Carlisle's um investment expectations and what they've gone through and accommodated them while doing something for a theater a group that just, it doesn't work. So I don't know what that sweet spot is. Um so those are my thoughts on that, and I but REUs is something to consider as as is the height uh with respect to potential additional community.
But John, would you do the REU once they come back with the development? The REU thing would have to go through the planning commission, and that would be addressed somewhat along the line.
I I I'm not saying they got to solve it tonight.
Why why don't we, since the art, the question of REUs has been raised, um Matt, do you want to respond to that briefly?
Um, yeah, just to follow up on the REUs, I mean, we, in previous review letters, we reattached a. Yeah, just to follow up on the REUs, I mean, we, in previous review letters, we attached a um. Uh, kind of a a variety of uses, Ian Arbor Tables A, which is kind of the basis of what we. We estimate REUs at. We gave of various different uses of of what REUs are. So just for example, a a typical restaurant, typical like Carlisle, that would be about a thirty to forty REU. Uh, facility and then remember every residential unit. So apartment about of about a thousand square feet or more is one REU, s- same as a single-family house, so. You know, without knowing how many units per story and all that detail, which would we would get into during a detailed engineering. We would do the estimate and a theater is a use in Table A and we would compare and contrast that during like a detailed engineering review, so. Um, for example, if there was a mixed use with a restaurant and single-family attached. You could easily get up to eighty ninety REUs. If it was retail with residential. It it would probably be half that, so.
Hey, man, how many, how many, how many REUs does the, does the theater have today?
I'd have to look that up. I don't have that in front of me, but it it hasn't been in use, so theoretically, right now and for the last. However, many years that it's been inoperable, it has been used, it has been using zero. Um, I I can look that up if you want, me too.
Yeah, no big deal. I mean, but at the end of the day, we're we're kind of arguing about a ghost here. I mean, we don't know any data, so to sit there and negotiate about with data that we don't have, we don't know what the development to be, we don't know the REUs are gonna be. Yeah, we don't know the parking's gonna be, so it's like, let them go find a buyer, a potential developer, then come back. And then we can negotiate all that, then it's, I think it's open book on all that stuff.
So um, I think you had a comment you wanted to make.
Yeah, um, well, first of all, I just want to say, I know everybody's been negotiating very hard and very good faith. So to all three of you who've talked tonight, thank you so much for that. Um, I want to say we need to im- improve our process. I know the last time this came to the board. It came from the planning commission and Jan, um, to all the planning commissioners, thank you for your work on it. If you recall, I was one of the people who had a lot of concerns because when it came to the board, what we had before was basically a laundry list of potential uses. And we had hotels, we had all sorts of things and I was like, whoa, whoa, whoa. So I want to say that I was I was part of that delay, but I think that the work we've done in the interim is very good to narrow it down. Um, to a set of potential uses, so I'm supportive of these um, potential uses here. Um, you know, notably, we were able to remove what the planning commission had recommended, which was a hotel, which would have, you know. Totally knocked out any chance of housing. I want to say I've been very, um, you know, a bunch advocating for the multifamily housing. I want to thank Josh for his hard work on it. Um, he and his team went back and forth on this for the multifamily housing. For the REUs, all of that, we don't have the data and yes, what this would be is a whole bunch more REUs. And it would be prioritizing this area for dense development for housing for five to six stories with buildings that have stand pipes. You know, ladder trucks, it's it's a whole different thing to do a five, six-story building with stand pipes and the firefighting for that's different, so. Um, I just want to say like as a standalone development, my hope is that we will get multifamily housing. Um, some much, much needed and we very carefully crafted the below-market housing definition. So that it really would be some workforce housing. And I know that both Gus and John are supportive of that. They live here, they have real families, they know how expensive it is here. They need workers, um, so I just want to thank everybody for your work on that. I think the only outstanding. Aspect here is related to the restaurant and if I um. Am am tracking this right, um, you know, John and Gus started out, you know, asking that there be no other restaurants. Atkins started out asking that there be up to three hundred seats. When they came back to us, they said maybe fifty. And then Atkins came back maybe one twenty-five. And then what I heard tonight um from John is that maybe up to two restaurants at forty seats each or cap one restaurant at seventy-five seats. If I heard you right. And so um, I think that's in line, Kathy, with your um proposal of Mac. Uh, capping the number of seats at, I think you said sixty or seventy, we should probably land on a number. Um, no matter the the number of establishments, um, I would support that. I recognize Josh, that changes. Um, what's being done here, but I think um, it's, I'm I'm going to um, support kind of our. Our our local business people here, um, who have have put in um, the money and we want to support. Um, our commitment to them and also continuing uh to make sure that that Carlisle site is supported. So I would support um, the model motion with um, the uh cut proposed by Laura. On the point entertainment indoor recreation, which may include restaurant and bars, strike to allow flexibility of reusing the existing building. And uh, potential amendment, Kathy, if I have this right, restaurant slash bars. Strike with a maximum of one twenty feet with a maximum of. Seventy seats, no matter the number of establishments.
Seventy seats is fine with me.
Regardless, yeah, yeah.
So so with a total maximum of seventy seats, no matter the number of establishments, is that what you're saying?
A total, this means a total number of seventy seats throughout the whole PUD.
Right, so.
I just want to be.
So not two, you you could have two restaurants with thirty-five seats each.
It's a little, yeah.
But but as as has been pointed out, uh, once we've gotten down to seventy seats, the likelihood of having, of having. A restaurant in the hall is pretty slim.
Though though I will say.
What size restaurant?
I I will say, John, John did say, John did suggest and I want to listen to our restaurant for. Uh, two at forty seats or one at seventy-five. I hear you right.
You okay with that?
And I just don't want to put something, you know, awkward if that um.
Say that again, it would be two forty seats?
Uh, restaurants or bar, um, let me offer, um, with a maximum of two establishments. Of no more than forty seats each or one establishment of no more than seventy-five seats.
So we have, we have a motion.
I'll love it.
Well, um, I think, I think, yes, okay, so we have a motion by Flintoff, support by Noel. Um, and um, I think we should probably call the role for this.
You want to read it out again just so everybody's clear on.
We have, let's not read the entire motion though.
No, no, just just the change of the.
Wait, wait a minute, um, so I'm picturing in Infield Township, right there on Oak Valley, I'm sorry, is it Oak Valley? Um, you're going towards the Meyer, you're sitting at the light and there is um, Ann Arbor Celine. They have newer facilities or a newer housing there and underneath there's restaurants and I think there's, there's other things.
There's a juice bar and a pizza place or something.
Okay, and how many seats per, so we're gonna say two, so let's say we have this housing, they're gonna need some type of grocery or whatever underneath. And then, so we have one restaurant, like a juice bar, and then that would be what, forty seats? Is I don't know how much.
I think, I think we're overthinking this, um. We're we're basi- basically what we're proving tonight is a list of things that Josh and his team can go out and market. So at least they can get started. They've been waiting for us to give them permission to do something other than a theater. And I think they had hopes for something a little bit more, you know, um, a little bit more of a list, but. Um, but this is what I think we're headed towards this evening and um, I'm hopeful that we can vote on this and then move on with our agenda and let Josh give out with his.
Jessica hasn't read the the, just the change.
Yep, the model motion with two changes on entertainment indoor recreation, which may include restaurant, bars. Strike to allow flexibility of reusing the existing building. And last bullet point, restaurant slash bars, strike with a maximum of a hundred and twenty-five seats replaced with a maximum of. Two establishments at no more than forty seats or one establishment at no more than seventy-five seats. Motion by Flintoff, support by Noel.
Yes, exactly. So um, if we could go ahead and call the role.
Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Flintoff? Yes. Motion adopted seven zero.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you.
Okay. I know, I know, I know, I'm just wondering, do we need a break or if people? All right, all right, I just want to check the, check the room. All right, so let's move on then to the new business. The first item is K one, this is Slim Chicken's Detail Engineering Final Site Plan. Um, and Laura, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Could you introduce the sighting, please?
Sure, so as you're aware, Slim Chickens, um, you saw this as a conditional use a while back, so. Um, they are seeking detail engineering review to um, approval to construct a three thousand fifty square foot fast food restaurant with drive-through. This property is located at five five zero five Arbor Chase Drive. It contains one point six two acres, it's currently vacant. It's Zone C two and is located within the Jackson Road overlay. Um, this is the last parcel of the Arbor Chase development, it's just south of where the Coney Island um, is located there across Arbor Chase Drive. The planning commission recommended conditional use approval and the township board then granted conditional use approval back in September. With a couple of several items to be addressed. All of those items have been addressed as part of the detail engineering um, review. And um, Carlisle Wortman can recommend approval of the detailed engineering plan this evening. Um, I know Matt probably has um, some comments and I think that the applicants are also available with ques- if you have questions.
Who are the applicant's names?
I, Mylina.
Yeah, they can raise their hands to.
Yeah, I think, I know Mylina, but I'm not sure of the other team members.
Okay, Mylina, I'm promoting you to channel it if you want to for that.
And uh, Matt, while while we're waiting, could you address any uh, engineering questions, please?
Hello, everyone, uh, this is Mylina, um, I'm here with um. Brian is hopping on in a minute, um, I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, are you still with us? Did you want to make any comments about engineering matters with regard to? Okay.
Yep, yep, in your packet, you should have our letter, uh. Dated February uh, first, um, we've worked through all the utility. Uh, issues, uh, there's currently no REUs on the site, but um, the site being um, you know. Basically, fast service, uh, the required REUs are only six point five, so approving this, you'd be approving. Six and a half REUs, um, which is not a lot, um. The, we had a couple of minor, kinda, actually only one, uh, housekeeping item, um, which I believe the applicants. Already addressed, um, just with a discrepancy on the cover sheet and that's not a big deal. There's no uh, permits for the Wausau County Road Commission, um, they did do a traffic impact study. Uh, for the site, it was approved uh, October twenty-seventh. Um, and everything's in good order in terms of engineering and and from the utility side of things, so. If there's any questions specific to engineering, I'd be happy to answer.
Right. Are there um, questions from members of the board?
Well, I do have a question about REUs and I don't know if this is Matt or um. They, so they do, they will be paying for the REUs, correct? The developer, because we're giving them the six point five because that's what they need for this size of building, is that, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, there's REUs that you pay for in terms of tapping fees and whatnot and Brandon can probably speak to that better than I can, but. There's, there's actual tap fees that they will be paying for, but as a policy, so township has. A surplus, a limited surplus of REUs and it's always, they've always been approved and handed out on a first come, first served basis. Um, there's an old SAD rule for REUs that were um, that's kept, we reference that. And so whenever I say the site doesn't have any REUs or they do have an existing REUs because this is a green site. Has not been previously um, developed on or whatever. Um, and to answer Mark, Mark's question from earlier, the, for example, Goodrich Theater has thirty-four point five REUs. And it's going to be redeveloped, so they're at least starting with something, the site's starting with nothing. Um, and but based on the Ann Arbor Table A that I referenced before, they will be required to be given six point five REUs. There's no charge or fee for those, it's just, there's a different fee for tapping REUs and it gets a little convoluted. And I could probably teach a two-hour seminar on on this. And I don't think you guys want to do that tonight, so anyway, just, so just to answer your question, the site will require six point five REUs. And.
That's, well, and I know there was, um, we approved a building to expand and then. They had a existing building and then they needed seven REUs that were not charged for. To, because they had to expand from one size to another and they were not charged for that and. That was, I had heard quarter thousand, so that's why I don't know this process and I just wanted to clear, you know, clarify.
That's completely different, that's, that's, you're talking about meter sizes and it's completely different, so.
I just want to make sure that we're collecting the fees that we should be. But, okay, thank you for that and yes, um, I look forward to your REU presentation one day.
Careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
So um, given that we've already. Reviewed this for the conditional use, um, and this is coming back and it's pretty much what they were talking about doing at that time. Is someone prepared to make the model motion to approve SP number two, three, zero, one, eight Slim Chicken's Detail Engineering Site Plan? To construct a three thousand fifty square foot fast food restaurant. With drive-through on the property located at five, five, zero, five Arbor Chase Drive. To move by Palmer, to support by Brazil.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm looking at the site plan and the landscaping that. I don't know what's going on with the printer, but it's really small, so this, and I've driven by there quite often because I live around the corner. So we have this, the, the um. The parcel here and at the, this would be the, the west, um, yes, west. Those are condos, I believe, or townhouses right there at the end of, you know, where the site. Uh, Slim Chickens ends and then we have these condos. Well, there's a double drive-through and I want to make sure that there's enough landscaping, so those people that have already been living in those condos are getting. Headlights. So I can't tell by looking at this, but Matt or Laura, can you verify that there will be enough landscaping to?
Or screening of some kind?
Yes, of something.
This is Laura, so yes, yes, we have, we have reviewed the landscape plan in detail and it meets all of the landscape requirements. And there is existing um, trees in the back that will remain and there are going to be additional trees um, on this site. There are trees on the Arbor Chase condo site and then there will be, also be trees on, on the Slim Chicken site as well.
Those are all garages in the backside of the.
Oh, those are garage, okay, good, I just, just, I, I don't, we don't need any more coins.
All right. If there are no further questions or comments, uh, could we proceed with the role, please?
Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Motion adopted seven zero.
Okay, let's move then to.
G thirteen.
G thirteen, this is the item that was pulled from the consent agenda, it is the uh, grant and um. We, I, Jan, are you still with us? I know this is uh, something that you've shepherded along.
Yes, I am.
Okay, um, so if this was pulled, uh, trust me, Carrie, do you have questions for for Jan?
Well. Yeah, thank you, I'm all for grants, um, however, uh, reading through this. This is for the HVAC system, yes, so. It almost seems like it's already been approved, the type of HVAC system, we haven't had. Um, and this, I would assume would be part of the capital improvement plan discussion, yeah, but it seems to me, and I don't want to. Want us to be locked into something saying, yeah, we're gonna go through this grant because we're only gonna have geothermal as our HVAC. There's other options that we don't know because we haven't been presented, um, and. So this is from, so prepared by Will Hathaway, so. And so this is from, prepared by Will Hathaway, submitted by planning. But then it says the Environmental Sustainability Task Force recommends approval. They are subcommittee. They should not be recommending anything except to the planning commission. And if they, they're not subject to the Open Meetings Act. So they're not supposed to be making decisions, only recommendations. And it seems like this is coming from them and we're going to approve this grant application and locking us into only having this type of HVAC.
Jan, do you want to address the question?
Sure. Yeah, first of all, what the very first, and if you go through, I don't know if in the board packet, it has the schedule, but what this does, the very first thing is looking at multiple options. So we had a study earlier on that looked at a VRF option. The, the basis of this was the goals are improving the ventilation, improving energy efficiency and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So there are multiple options that we need to assess, and the first part of the grant is assessing these options. And then the, and so the, the options would be what's the cost? What's the, what are the greenhouse gas emissions? What are the operational costs moving forward? Et cetera, et cetera. So there'll be multiple options presented. And the group, which is, it includes Kevin, Mike Crasik, Brandon, would all, you know, have all kind of reviewed this grant too. And the idea is to come up with the options and a recommendation to the Board of Trustees that would be done with a presentation, et cetera. And then a bulk of the grant money gets used to implement whatever option is selected.
Okay, so that we will be presented?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
Right. And the reason that geothermal came up was because originally that was a very expensive option, but now geo through the Inflation Reduction Act, there's a thirty percent direct pay. So that puts geo back in kind of under consideration.
Okay, and we also have to look at geothermal, you know, if it breaks down, what are, what's the outcome of that? And how much does it cost to upkeep? And you know, there's a lot of it with all three options or four options or whatever.
Yeah, just, you know, I mean, the geothermal is
Correct.
Generally reliable. I mean, there's no
As David read, he just went through a process.
Well, maybe install it, right?
Just a comment.
Sure. But anyway.
Oh, sorry. Were you calling us?
No, no, I was talking, I was trying to call you.
Sorry. Excuse me. I just want to thank Jan for your work on this. This is really, the funding sources are, you know, ever changing and complex, and I want to thank you for it. I also want to note on process, part of why we're seeing grant applications come before the board for approval before they go forward is because I've been insisting on it and because, because we have a draft grant policy, which we're working on, we've, we've had it in in, in draft form since twenty twenty one. And, and also I commit to continuing to work with the finance team so that they're in on the front end of these things. So that we can, yeah, but, but that's why. And, and I, I, I will say too, you know, some good work has already been done assessing it. And I think, you know, a good HVAC for, for health. You know, we went through COVID for efficiency. There's a lot of reasons. So there'll be multiple more steps. And if we can knock a hundred thousand dollars off the project, the better.
Well, we don't know that the HVAC system is the best one for air circulation and health.
Right, but I think we're going to be selecting.
Okay.
Right, this is an option.
That's fine.
Gets some money.
It's clear that this is one option. This is predetermined at this time.
Yeah, I don't see anything in there that.
I don't need to put it.
Okay, good.
Something Jillian said sounded that way. Be cognizant of our taxpayers and what we're, we're paying.
Well, we had, we had a presentation from Brandon talking about the up, upgrade.
It was very general.
Yes, but.
And I told him I had a lot of questions.
Right, so we.
He said, we'll talk later.
We will, we will have opportunities. I think that's part of, part, yes, and part of what Jan was saying is anything that results from this grant application would come back to the board for review and approval. So I, I think there's steps still where we will be able to ask questions and, and have input on the decision, but any improvement to our HVAC system, I think would be better than leaving it as it is.
I just want to be sure, because I remember I was part of the group that feedbacked that evaluated different options. And someone said, improving your HVAC system is necessarily going to improve your air filtration dealing with issues like COVID or measles or whatever infectious diseases we might have circulating around.
Right.
So.
And if I, if I could, Kathy, I think that's a great point. And Jillian too, like why we need more time with the capital improvement plan? Because in that, for example, on this project, we could state like, you know, here's a couple objectives of this project as guiding like energy efficiency, airflow, traction, whatever it is, right?
Yeah, and I think that we should apply for the grants. We may not get them, but we, we, we won't get them if we don't apply.
That's right.
Like to make a model motion?
Yeah. Sure.
Okay, so the model motion is to authorize the township to apply for a community energy management grant of a hundred thousand dollars. It's like, so moved by Carrie, support by Brasso. Voice vote, or do we need, no, because it's just applying for a grant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. We are moving on to item K two.
Yep. And Brian, could you join as panelists, please?
Sorry.
Andy here, man. Is, is, can we get Andy like? Yeah, making this poor man.
Andy's waiting for the next item on the agenda.
For several items, I think.
Isn't K three is the item?
The chief's here for the budget as well.
Oh, all right. Well, okay, so he's here for the long haul, but I would have turned at this point to our township manager to introduce this item. But Brian, as you may have heard, Joyce is not feeling well. So can you introduce this item for us as our, our finance director?
Yes, we're talking about the amendment.
Correct.
Yes, this is, yeah, the bundle of amendments.
Okay. So I'm not sure which document is in your packet or that you received. The one that's online that I, I pulled down at the beginning of the meeting that only had an ending balance to it is not the final. I don't know if Joyce provided you with the final that showed the progression of current amended proposed amendment.
Okay.
A plus B equals C.
Brian, could I, could I jump in and, and try to clarify things for some people?
Yeah.
Um, so, so thank you. Brian, Joyce sent us a bunch of documents throughout the day. They are all up online. We're looking at agenda K two. In agenda K two for year end budget amendments, we just have the resolution. We did also get the larger document here with the details. And that detail is just for the twenty four, twenty five budget. We don't have any detail for the year end amendments for twenty three, twenty four.
Okay, may I share my screen?
Please. Is it you talking? No.
Well, is this, is this what you're having up?
So that is, that is for the next year. We're talking about, sorry, Brian, I'm just going to jump in and try to keep us focused. We're talking about current fiscal year, twenty three, twenty four, year end, March thirty first, twenty twenty four. By law, this board must adopt year end budget amendments to, and with a balanced budget. Correct, Brian?
It's illegal to spend more than what has been appropriated. It is, so this amendment, and I hope you're seeing my screen with the, the multiple columns here.
A bit, yeah.
But any of the positive numbers are to get these funds or departments under budget, the spending estimated by three thirty one to be under budget. The negative numbers here is not a reflection on, on any of their activity. It's a matter of unspent dollars. For example, Department two sixty five, Building and Grounds, we're decreasing the budget by seventy six thousand. Not because a project doesn't need to happen, it's just, it's not going to happen by three thirty one. And so we're reducing the budget expenditures to partially offset the things that needed to go up. So at this point, you know, twelve days before the end of your fiscal year, the horse is out of the barn, the toothpaste is out of the tube, the year is basically over. So I would ask the board to please approve this budget amendment so that when it comes time to be audited over the summer, you don't get a audit slap on the wrist for going over budget.
So, so Brian, this is the first time we're seeing this chart. So I just need a quick moment to double check. It, Brian, a question. Are we required by law to not expend more by general fund department or by general fund as a whole?
That's a great question. So it's different between general fund and the other funds.
Right.
Not by law, but by how this township adopted the budget. So you adopt your budget for the general fund at the activity or department level. And so that's what you see here on screen. For the other funds, you do it at the total fund level. So just general fund, it needs to be by department within the budget.
Right. So, so Brian, would you be so kind as to scroll back up to the general fund department breakdown? Okay, one moment. Brian, I want to mention, I don't have a copy of this.
No one does.
But you email it to the board and maybe we take a break and we get copies.
Uh, sure, that would be fine.
Um, and Brian, I'm already seeing a couple, a, a couple things. Um, I sent, I sent your team on Sunday, February eighteenth at five eleven P M. Some proposed budget amendments related to, and this may be folded in here, I'm, I'm just not sure. At the year end, when we do cost allocation, we always kind of true it up because we estimate how much the accounting is going to be, how much treasure is going to be, how much other things are going to be. And then we look at the end and the five percent, and I made a few adjustments. But like when I see the change in accounting, for example, of one ninety one. Oh, I see what you did. Okay, so I just gave you the, for example, the proposed amended cost allocation offset of accounting was the negative four thirty. And the proposed amendment was the eighty thousand, one, two, five. That's correct. I see. And so I got you, Brian. So the, the total accounting was really, say, about six seventy, six hundred and seventy thousand. It was offset by four hundred and thirty thousand with the two thirty five remaining. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then I'm understanding this. Thank you. And so Brian, can you talk the board through how you went through the process? Because I know you and Ally worked hard, kind of looking ahead to all of our expenditures through March thirty first?
Yeah, the, so when doing an amendment like this at the end of the year, we try to get as close to the end of the year as possible before doing it. So as many invoices can come in and be recognized as possible. So the, the timeline of what we have to guesstimate is shorter. And so these, the, the figures that we calculated all this off of is based on around February first, which is plenty of, you know, a two month window up until the end of the year is, is pretty easy to predict. At this point, the big projects are either done or they're not going to be done. And wages and fringes are all very cyclical month to month. And so we take the spending as of, you know, through ten months. And then plus or minus, you know, one timer things that we know, you know, of buying a piece of equipment or paying an insurance premium that only happens once a year. So we factor that in and then project out till the end of the year. And so if your, if that projection is greater than what the current budget is, then we would suggest an amendment so that at the end of the year, spending is less than the final amended budget. We don't worry so much about revenue because it's not a problem to be over or under what you budgeted for revenue. The only problem is when you spend money that was not appropriated.
Right.
So hopefully, unless there's a weird invoice out there that, that we're not aware of, that's going to show up sometime between now and the audit, so May, unless there was some weird invoice that shows up. If you adopt this as is, I would expect that every department would finish under its amended budget.
And Brian, would you be so kind to keep scrolling down so we can all just kind of look at this? I, I just want to know, we had one audit finding by not doing this accurately last year. So this is where we get audit findings once in a while. It's been, for example, Open Space Fund and then East Delhi are the ones in the last two years. And so I know that Ally and Brian probably did really good projections on this stuff, but I just want to ask, is there any, you know, big quirky things? Like, certainly, I think it would just be any big expenditures. Open space, big expenditures, East Delhi, that was just the accounting where we, you know, we, we paid too much. That was corrected, but I don't want to, I, I think there's, there's nothing else on there, out there quirky this year unless somebody can think of something.
Well, the big expenditure, not booked. No, not, not booked, but
Okay.
The eight thirteen, the sad refunding taxpayers. That should be in the next budget, not the end of the year.
Brian, can you tell us a little more about Fund eight thirteen? Yeah, we've already done that.
That, that already, yeah, that, that already happened.
Was it Township Rose?
Township wide one.
Eight thirteen was not a township one. It, the, no, because that's since two thousand sixteen, Township wide was two thousand thirteen. So that's a different fund. What sad happened in two thousand sixteen, there was Liberty Park Ridge, but the, the refund.
Oh, I see. Yeah, eight oh six is the Township wide. Yeah, um, Brian, can you tell us that eight thirteen, the twenty sixteen road SAD?
I'm sorry, I can't tell you what road that was.
I know that Rose Drive.
This is what was, what's been recorded already.
Yes, there's some, there was a couple other, the small ones that are done and there's money to be paid back. Yeah, but I, I don't have this spreadsheet here.
Yeah, Donna, I, I think you're right. I'm thinking that's Park Ridge, and that should not be returned until next year because that's what, that, that was the end of the year, or that was for the budget.
What, what fund is that again?
Two, I'm sorry, eight thirteen, two thousand sixteen road sad. And thirty one thousand, which is, it's twenty nine thousand.
So eight thirteen, that's Joanne, Park Ridge, Laurentide, Honey Creek, Baker Heights, Liberty Hills, Siometeau Commons.
Yes, but it would only be Park Ridge that would have the, the refund.
But has, I'm not talking about the future. In this past year, we haven't taken any action on this.
Right, so that's what I'm confused about why that, that's there.
Well, regardless, it's one of the funds.
Let's look at the bad refunding taxpayers, but we didn't, we're not doing that in the next two weeks, though.
So I agree.
My understanding, this has already been done.
The, well, if it's, well, if it's proposed, it's not already been done. We'd be doing it until I would take action.
The, the proposed amendment doesn't mean that it's about to happen. It's, this is what I'm asking you to change the budget. In most cases, or almost every case, the spending has already occurred.
I understand, Brian.
The harm would be in not changing the budget to make sure that we covered the expenditure that, that we don't really understand at this moment, but you think has already occurred.
Yeah, I think we should go ahead with it. Let's flag. Yeah, I think we should go ahead with it. Let's flag. Be able to change it, though, if it's wrong later on.
If, if it's wrong, there's no harm done.
There's no harm.
And that's what I'm saying. The harm would be not doing what is exactly laid out in front of us because then we would be opening ourselves up for potential audit.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. We'll keep this book, but I'll look into it. We'll report back. But I'm, I'm comfortable going ahead with this resolution as presented.
So to adopt the attached resolution amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget in compliance with the balanced budget requirements pursuant to the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act of nineteen sixty-eight as amended? You would make that motion?
Um, no amendment. Who's amending? As presented.
Adopt the attached resolution amending the budget.
Oh, yeah, this is the end of the year budget that we're amending.
Oh, I got you.
I'm just reading the model motion.
Oh, it's the Accounting Act as amended. Yeah, that, can we just clarify that and just, when it says as amended, it sounds like we've amended the resolution.
Oh, I think, I think it's the Uniform Budget and Accounting Act of nineteen sixty-eight.
Yeah, it's awkward. I got it. Yep.
Okay.
But as long as it's clear, no amendments.
As amended. All right, so moved by Flintoff, support by Brzezo. Um, please call the roll.
Brzezo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Resolution adopted. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll be back.
Oh, yes.
Don't leave. All right, eight three, possible action, resolution to establish mileage rate for the fire services special assessment district. This is, um, basically executing what we had the public hearing about at our prior meeting. Um, and, um, will allow the, allow us to, uh, tax at the, or to assess in the winter taxes, right, um, at, uh, rate of one point three five.
Yeah, can I, I want to make a, a correction to the proposed resolution I put forth, please?
Okay.
Uh, find out, uh, the whereas, I'd like to, um, change one of the whereas's, the third from the bottom, to just make, um, clear, I apologize, I should have corrected this earlier and I just noticed it today. Where it says whereas on November seventh, twenty twenty-three, I'd like to amend it as follows. Whereas on November fifth, twenty nineteen, the Scioto Township electorate decided to approve a fire protection special assessment levy of one point three five mils, semicolon. And then down to the final, um, be it further resolved, let's make it finally resolved. Finally resolved, the mileage rate is set as follows, one point three five. And with that, I'll offer that resolution.
Okay. So you would make the motion?
Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm just introducing the resolution, yeah.
There is no motion.
Yep, a good thing there's a whole resolution, so I introduce the resolution.
So, so I see, all right. So the motion is to adopt the resolution as, um, as amended.
Support by Riser.
Okay, moved by Flintoff, support by Riser, please call the roll.
Brzezo?
Yeah.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
So K four, K five, we have removed from this agenda.
By the way, on the first page of this resolution, right near the top, it says following preamble and resolution were offered by Flintoff and Riser. Here's where you put in, whoever's.
That's right. I'm with you, Donna. You don't need a motion when you have a resolution.
Okay, all right.
Super efficient.
So now we are on K six. This is consideration of the proposed budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Again, I would be turning to Township Manager Parker, uh, in her absence. Uh, Brian, will you introduce the budget, please?
Yes, uh, so this is, we're now talking about the year beginning April one, couple, twelve days from now, uh, through March thirty-one of twenty twenty-five. Uh, what has been presented by, uh, Township Manager Parker is what we talked about two weeks ago at the, uh, public hearing and workshop. Um, with some minor modification changes, which I hope have been communicated to you and you have in front of you. Uh, those changes are very minor. Uh, there, it's ten grand here, twenty grand there, taking something out. Um, maybe shifting some expenses from full-time salary to part-time salary. But really, nothing materially has changed since it was discussed two weeks ago. Um, I, I will remind you that according to Public Act two, you have to have a budget approved by the time the clock strikes midnight to start your fiscal year. So, um, I would, it would be my preference that, uh, Township Manager Parker was there in order to explain some more of how, what her thinking is uh, on some of these changes, but I can't speak for her. And so my request for you is to, uh, pass the budget as presented. And to the extent that there are any projects, line items, purchases, uh, anything that you believe still requires additional discussion, no problem. I would just ask that you do it, uh, within, into the next year, and if it results in amending the budget, we can amend the budget at any time. Um, I would not want to be in a position, but I'll do whatever you like. But I would not want to be in the position of, at this point, scratching out individual lines, writing over them, uh, to make fairly minor changes. So, uh, this is a very common practice. I worked through this at many municipalities. Um, this has been a very rigorous budget process, one of the most rigorous that I've ever been involved in in terms of the number of department head meetings, the rounds of revisions. This is a very good budget and I feel very confident about it. Um, but it's always up to the elected members of the board to decide whether or not they want to vote for it. Um, and so with that, I will turn it back over to you for discussion or anything else.
Sure, uh, clerk Flintoff.
So, um, I just want to focus on what we would, what we must pass by March thirty-first, which is the General Appropriations Act with this list of positions attached incorporated as part of it. So these are the two documents we would be passing tonight. Um, and there were new versions of each of these sent out today. They're both online. Um, I would agree with Brian that internally, there's been very good process. I would say at this board, it's been, um, difficult because we haven't had a chance to really talk about the big stuff. You know, we still don't have a balanced budget. Um, we still, we got some of our questions answered, um, but we haven't, you know, really debated it. The big things. That said, I agree with Brian, you know, we're trying to get on track to quarterly budget amendments. Um, certainly, an appropriation is not just, is, is not demanding to spend. And that, that is plain. Um, but there, there are a couple of things. You know, so, so I will just want to say, I'm not asking to change, but there are things like, there's another fifty thousand of elections revenue that's coming in. That's not reflected here. There's a lot of things that aren't reflected here that we can tighten up in the first quarter budget amendments. But there are, are some things I, I think we do need to talk about. Um, one is, and, and I have a few, if I could offer, I don't know if you, I should start, for that kind of big, big dollar areas.
Could I just move the budget so I have something to amend? Could I, I mean, I would, I would move to adopt the attached resolution approving the twenty twenty-four budget for the fiscal year commencing April first, twenty twenty-four and ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved by Riser.
Support.
Support by Palmer. So we have a motion on the table to approve the budget, um, resolution. And now, uh, clerk Flintoff, please proceed with, uh, what you were going to say.
Sure. So I think there's a, a few areas I want to discuss. Um, planning, fire, and DDA, um, are the big ones. Um, we still don't have a balanced budget. We'll be close. Um, but I, I think these are areas where we, we should at least acknowledge for the record, even if we don't make changes. One, to the one oh one, seven oh one planning budget, I want to know what was, we don't have a standard budget policy, we should, about how we budget revenue. Typically, how we budget revenue is if we know we're going to get it, like, say, we've gotten a grant award agreement or something, we put it in there. What is different about this planning budget than has been proposed to the board in prior years is that the, the fees are estimated up about ten percent. And that is not something I prefer we do. I prefer we have a budget policy that's a little more conservative, that doesn't broadcast what we think our fees might be. Planning and zoning fees need to be looked at. We're already starting that process. We're going to Pittsfield today to do a field trip. We're looking at schedules from elsewhere, so, um, we need to raise our planning and zoning fees. What's in this budget is an estimate of ten percent increase of planning and zoning fees. I don't like putting those estimates of revenue in there because I have no idea if it's going to be ten percent increase, and I'm pretty sure it's going to be much, much more than that. Um, I also don't like to broadcast to a potential contractor, our planning department, how much more we might be able to pay them. So I just want to state on the record, I think that that's a, a practice I'd like to get away from and something that's been, um, not, not what I, how I would want to do it. Does that make sense? Um, we've had a deficit in our planning and zoning, um, budget for a long time. We've started piecing that apart by separating out planning and zoning. So I wouldn't have any proposed amendment to the general fund, but just wanted to put that comment on the record.
I thought you had like.
Should I go to the next?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, is it okay if I go to the next fund?
Sure, work, work your way through the list.
And if you, if you're going to talk about a page number, I've got a lot, can you let it?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I was just, I was just kind of going by fun.
I got a lot.
That's okay.
Yeah, thanks.
So I'm, I'm looking at this one. Uh, it's the resolution.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm looking at the number four estimated, um, revenues. I want to talk about the fire department. Um, one of the questions I had at our last meeting, and thank you, Brian and Ally, for answering it. Um, and thank you also for providing the detail because one important thing that the detail provides us, it's not that we're required to adopt by detail, we're not. We're required to adopt by department and the general fund or by fund for two oh six forward. But what the detail shows you, for example, if you look at the, the detail in two oh six, the fire fund in the detail in the one oh one, is it shows fund balance. And fund balance is really important to look at. So at the last budget that we had, it showed about a three million dollar fund balance in the fire department. That was not accurate because if, you know, all the expenses weren't booked. We had that million dollar pumper tanker that hadn't been booked yet. So now it's to about, what, uh, let me look at Brian's notes. One point eight million, Brian?
I'm sorry, which one?
Fire fund balance? That's in the narrative you provided? Yeah, so, and, and about right. I appreciate it. Projected ending fund balance of one point eight million as of three thirty-one twenty-five. So this is in the, the narrative that was provided, um, in our packet tonight. And so I, I want to talk about this because we've talked a lot about trying to fund our fire department fully with the three firefighters. Right now, this budget provides for three firefighters starting on September one. And I want to talk about how we could get them on April one. When I look at the fire fund, fund balance of one point eight, I see a couple of things. Number one, one point eight million, that's projected with this budget. If we adopt it, hiring the firefighters at September one, by year end, we're going to have one point eight million in the fire fund. That is just at our minimum fund balance-ish. And Brian may suggest we have more fund balance than that, but it's, it's cutting it close, and I will say, it's cutting it uncomfortably close for me. So that when I look at what's before us right now, I don't see us. I, I'm concerned that our fire fund is going to be a little short at the end of the year. Even hiring firefighters on September one. And hiring people is not a one-time cost. It's ongoing. We hope to get a safer grant. The chief has been diligent about applying for safer grants every single year. We have never gotten one. We, there's a lot of criteria that won't work in our favor. So what I want to say is, I want to acknowledge that it is very likely in the absence of a new mileage or grant funding coming through, it is very likely we are going to need to rely on our general fund to support the firefighters. And so whether we do that now, starting this year, April one forward, or whether we commit some general fund, fund balance for fiscal year on twenty-five, twenty-six, we just need to be honest about it. Because I don't want to be in a position of looking, you know, being here at the end of the fiscal year or something and having kind of a false narrative that the fire department ran out of money or something. This is the budget that we are being asked to adopt tonight is, is really tight for the fire department. And that's, and that's still waiting six months to hire somebody. So we can just put a note to it or look at it with our first quarter budget amendments, but we need to seriously look at dedicating general fund. Um, if we're going to continue to support the three firefighters ongoing.
Now, I want to make a very basic comment. Yeah, don't spend money unless you have it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's been going on with the fire department. Yes. We are fortunate to have a chief who's looking at the future, who's looking at what's going on and has made, has given us plans.
Mm-hmm.
But that doesn't mean we start to loan or whatever. We have to really look at it. Now, there's one thing, is it reflected, the, the loan that's already been given towards this truck? Is that reflected anywhere?
That was in the current fiscal year that we are just closing out, Donna.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
And it is, yep. And, and Donna, I agree with you, and that's why I'm raising it at the board table because of this very thing. Because what, what's being, and I don't think that's been said really explicitly, that what's proposed here is kind of so razor-thin for the fire fund that it's in, if we don't get safer, if we don't get mileage, if we don't get other, it's going to be necessary to use the general fund. So what I'm saying is if we're signing on for three firefighters, as I want to, you know, for at least summer, December, September first, and I would be willing to for April first. But what I'm saying is, once we start funding people, we have to pay for people. And necessarily, the general fund becomes the backup for that. So it is, the general fund has fund balance to be able to support that for a year or two while we await a more appropriate source such as a successful mileage request. But I'm, it's, it's just the, it's, it's just something we need to be like, honest about. This is what we're doing, is we're committing, if we're authorizing three more firefighters. We're saying it's important and we agree that the fire fund will offset it and the general fund will pick up the desserts.
I don't want to agree to anything like this. We, we approve this and as time goes, address the need as it comes.
I don't, I don't think that, um, Jessica's actually proposing a motion. She's just making a point, I think.
Yeah, is that clear? Was every, because I don't think we were all clear on how razor-thin this was.
No, I, um,
We just need to be, we need to be honest.
And I thank you for making the point. Um, I worry about generally dipping into a fund balance for a structural expense that's going to be reoccurring such that
Right.
when the fund ba, fund balance has dwindled, and we don't have the rainy day fund or the, 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 that, that trust fund, those funds there. I also worry that if we're going to go to the people and ask for a mileage, which I would support, or an act thirty-three, uh, which I would support, or doing at this table, which I'd be willing to do, my, to vote for it. But if we're going to be asking, uh, for, for more money through mileage or act thirty-three, then we shouldn't. more money through millage or act thirty three, then we shouldn't do it after having just, uh, rated isn't the right word, but dipped into allocated from from, from, from that fund balance. I, I, I think we should try to be as austere as we can until we can get our, uh, our, not our act together, but get our facts together, our presentation together that Mark's working on, so that we can, we can put this in front of the, the voters for the support, if, if that's what we do. So I, I worry about doing that at this juncture, and, and I appreciate you raising it that at some point, if that's.
There's gonna be at least a year gap.
No, I, I, yeah.
So just to be upfront.
Just be aware that we're.
I am, I am.
Are you aware that we're shorts, you know, short firefighters? And when one is absent because they threw their back out lifting a four hundred pound person to, so they could go to the doctor, that puts stress on the rest of the firefighters, and they could be down too. So just keep that in mind.
So can, can we move on with the points that you were gonna make about the budget? Oh, I'm sorry, I need to cut you off.
So this was Joyce's proposal to do it this way. And I actually agree with Joyce. I, I don't see any harm in waiting. I don't either. I'm just flagging it's, it's likely. You gotta be willing. We're gonna hire these people to.
I think she's just saying.
Back it up to the general fund.
Yeah. Explore all possibility, that's okay.
I didn't know if you were, you were headed toward offering a resolution.
You know, not, not for this, not for this budget, but, but I, I will say for future quarterly budget amendments, depending on how the hiring goes, what we find out about safer, we may wanna start committing future general fund, fund balance as a backup if, if none of these things come through. Because I don't wanna hire people that we don't have a plan to fund ongoing.
You know, it's just coming down this, you know, the fire is, is, is a, is a financial issue. It's a safety issue. Well, it's a safety issue first, right? It's a financial issue second, and we just gotta get resolved. That's why we're just trying to put one comprehensive plan, get this to bed. We've been poking at it for, ever since I've been here.
My guess, my guess this evening is to get through the budget discussion and, and approve the budget so that we're in compliance with, uh, with the state law.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, and then I have, um, the DDA, and then a couple corrections to the authorized positions sheet, which are small. Um, the D, the DDA, we've talked at this board table, um, many times about boulevard maintenance. And this budget, you know, is a chance to certainly, you know, an appropriation is not an authorization. But I would like to, um, suggest, and, and we don't have to do it tonight, but I will tell everybody, I will bring it as a very quick quarterly budget amendment, because spring is coming, to, um, have the boulevard maintenance proposed to come from the DDA fund and not from the township fund. The public improvement fund is one that we, it's worth having a presentation on the history of it. It is two revenue sources. Um, neither one must be used for boulevard maintenance. In fact, a public improvement fund in the past been used for Gordon Hall and other things. It is just that public improvement. And depending on the history there, it is something that would be very appropriate to use for a new fire station and some of our other things. So I just think we need to look at the DDA because they have a fund balance which they do not have a full capital plan for. Um, they are doing improvements to a boulevard, and, and they should be um, maintaining that. So I know, Will, I have said this as a policy point. I don't know how many times at this table, but I will be bringing that budget amendment to actually start that shift to the DDA.
Okay, so there will be a vote in the future on an amendment that you're proposing to have the DDA shoulder.
And the only reason why I'm not doing these tonight is because we're on a compressed timeline with kind of imperfect information.
Well, it also, the delay also allows for some dialogue with the DDA, which has not yet occurred.
Well, we've talked about it so many times at the table.
I'm just saying.
Cause you're down to the nitty gritty, so you really need to.
It would be, it would be, I think, respectful to have more conversation with the DDA. So let's, let, well, I think that's, that's what all of this is, is a heads up. So are there any more heads ups, heads ups?
So with the appropriations act, something we do through it is number seven, we not only appropriate, but we authorize positions. Um, this is an authorized position sheet that we incorporate by reference. And in so doing, we also actually create the positions that's in position control here. There are a couple, um, just corrections to it.
You have March eight, which, I've got a couple of these floating around.
Yeah. So the most recent one says authorized position as of March eighteenth draft. And this one is, is important that we all have a clear understanding of what we're adopting tonight, cuz it's incorporated as part of the resolution. Um, and with that, I'd like to just offer a couple corrections to just name it, authorized positions as of March eighteenth, strike the draft, so it matches what's in the resolution. Um, Brian, the column, current authorized pay as of four one, twenty twenty three. I wanna state for the record, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that that's the authorized pay as of four one, twenty twenty three, had the board adopted a five point one percent COLA tonight footnote. The union wages do not go up until May first.
I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to that. I'll, I'll trust that you're right.
Okay. I'm, I'm right there, and I wanna make that clear because I wanna just make clear we're not authorizing raises we haven't yet done.
So do, do we need a caveat?
Yeah, so my, my caveat would be that that column, current authorized pay as of four one, twenty twenty three, is actually authorized pay as of four one, twenty twenty four, correction. Or six, star. You know, it, this, just, if, if you just trust me to put in some note, it was, it, it had already assumed a five point one percent COLA that is not there. It also, I don't want to create any confusion with our union. Um, they are not getting raises a month early. They're take effect on May first, not April first per their.
And what, whatever the board does, that by one of some other number.
Exactly. So that's be a separate action via COLA. So when the board takes that action, likely next month,
Right.
then that'll all take effect.
Do we need to say contingent upon board action of approval or something to that effect?
Yeah, like with the COLA, um, separate action, separate future action from the board.
Contingent upon board approval, uh, up to whatever, or nobody would have to say that, but.
Yeah, just kind of, I think what we wanna say here is, it's everybody's currently authorized pay. Um, the the only changes that are incorporated are the ones that were described in the narrative, and those changes are the election inspectors, you know, the hourly from eighteen to twenty two and the sixteen to eighteen. That's reflected there. I also wanna reflect in one oh one, two fifteen clerk, deputy clerk, just to update the record of what the board action, the board has already taken. The board has already authorized and budgeted one point oh.
One oh one.
One oh one, two fifteen clerk, deputy clerk, the board has already authorized and budgeted one FTE at seventy to seventy six thousand. It is per year. It is exempt. Um, I also wanna note the deputy treasurer is exempt. I don't know why that says unknown. This is just a correction.
Okay. Wait a second, where does it say?
Uh, one oh one, two five three deputy treasurer, it says unknown.
Weird.
Under exempt, it is.
Oh, I see.
This is just simply a correction.
For the right.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, no, it says for deputy clerk, it says exempt, no.
And it should say yes? They, yes, yes, you're right. Yeah, okay. Sorry, now I see what you're.
And the same for deputy treasurer should say.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Political pointy.
The other
Yeah.
change we made, I just wanna be clear for the record. We made an adjustment to a utility tax two. Dave Podolski, that's not reflected here. I just want him to know we're not reducing his wage back down. And then I do have two proposed deletions from this. Um, that would match what's in the budget, and I believe was everyone's intentions here. One oh one, seven oh one, planning interns. Um, to strike those interns, they're not in the budget. Jan Culbertson has said she's not requesting them. Um, Township Manager Parker has said they're not planning on them. So that's one oh one, seven oh one, planning intern strike. There's actually no money in the budget for them.
Last line?
Yeah.
To just remove that entire line?
Yep. Similarly, please remove, I would suggest we remove the entire line of two oh ways parks. Parks, natural features, intern, two interns. Propose we strike that entire line as well. It's not in the budget. It's not been in anybody's plans. Um, our HR generalist has given us the advice, which is good advice, to strike interns, interns are not employees. And.
So the stewards are still there, but the interns are not?
Correct. And then this is an authorized position sheet. Um, Aurora will be taking over for me, keeping this up to date. And it'll always be kind of posted, so this can be updated throughout the year as the board makes decisions.
So just to be clear, uh, these are already authorized positions with what the employees are making right now? Is without the COLA?
No, no, this got, this, this got, so, so I, I, Ally was doing a great job, but she was working from an old version. That, there is some, there are just some mixups on the version. This, what, what is the actual dollar amounts that are reflected here is what Alec, for example, the elected officials, those are the salaries that will be on April first, for example, ten thousand a year for the compensation commission. The fire union positions are those which are in the CBA effective May first, not April first. And everybody else is actually current as of a few months ago, before we made those couple last decisions, plus five point one percent. So that's why with the board's permission, I just wanna put that caveat, just, I don't wanna create any confusion for staff about what their wages are.
Again, I just gotta, I gotta, I can't take it anymore. My back is just like.
Can we call a question?
Yes, let's do that. With those minor changes to, or corrections to the authorized positions, um, is someone, well, you already made the motion, and we already second, and we already have a second, so, so let's call the roll.
I can, I can.
Okay. With all those amendments incor- incorporated?
Yes, so with, with the amendments to the authorized positions that you just, that you just described. Or the corrections, I guess.
Sure.
Or clarifications.
So?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yeah.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Resolution adopted seven zero.
Okay. That brings us to the additional item we added at the beginning of the meeting, which is item case seven. And Clerk Flintoff, this is something that you prepared. Would you like to introduce it and explain it further?
Sure, absolutely. I, um, wanted to know the board received, um, this report from our manager. Um, I read through it. It's very technical. It is the N one D digital forensic report dated February twenty twenty four. It was the firm that was contracted to conduct aspects of the administrative review that the board ordered on, at its November twenty ninth meeting. Thank you, Chief, for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it's a highly technical report. Um, and I wanna create an opportunity for board members to ask questions of these experts together, so we're all hearing the same answers. I wanna make sure that other agencies who may be interested in this report also receive it. Um, for your background, at the bottom, I put the November twenty ninth motion. Um, this was arising to some, um, emails that were sent from Will's email account, but he was unaware that they were sent, so um, the, we asked their manager to conduct an administrative review of the causes of how that happened. Um, we now have this very technical report, which is kind of part of it. And so, um, I have a, a proposed kind of three-part motion here, I wrote on here, um, that would be to call for a special meeting um, to discuss the forensic report with a representative from N one Discovery, IT Director Chris Bailey and Township Attorney Mariah Fink, um, that we would also request that the township attorney, uh, please, Mariah, deliver a copy of this um, to the Washnaw County Sheriff's Office, and to request any information regarding any investigation the sheriff is undertaking related to the township. And then also to request, Mariah, that you would prepare any proposed resolution for possible action at the regular meeting of April, at, at a next regular meeting, let me say that. Regular meeting regarding any recommended next steps in the matter. That is my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll support.
So moved by Flintoff, support by Noel. Uh, may I ask a question about the township attorney? Um, so, um, if, this is not a confident, this is not covered by a confidentiality, the report, right?
They, they have actually offered, if that's, if you're asking if, if ND one would be, um, would think it's confidential, they've actually offered to discuss it.
Okay.
In a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I, I just wanted to make sure that we're not talking about a closed session kind of meeting.
No.
This would be an open publication.
I think it'd be important to have it in public.
Well, I'm not, I did, I'm just clarifying. I'm not, I'm not advocating one thing or another.
I have reviewed the, the document, and I don't see anything in there that would need to be privileged.
Okay, and, um, I, I agree completely that it was, it was almost impenetrable, some of it. Uh, and so I would value an opportunity to have it explained by the authors. Uh, presumably, they can answer questions and help us all to understand what the, you know, what it, what the word really, you know, what the findings really mean. Um, the second part of the motion delivered to the sheriff's office, I, I don't have any argument with that, um, but I, I do know that the sheriff has concluded its investigation and has handed it over to the prosecutor. So it may be that, I don't know, I'm not sure under the circumstances whether you would then deliver the, this report to the prosecutor, or whether that ship has sailed.
When, when did that happen?
Yeah, when did you learn that?
I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but, um, it, the.
Who did you learn it from?
The detective who was, um, the, the sort of expert on um, computers for the sheriff's department um, informed me that he had concluded and had referred his report to the prosecutor.
But about how long was, when was this?
Months.
Months?
Yeah, yeah. This is, they are done with their investigation.
So what you're just saying is, it really involved the sheriff and all the prosecutors, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, well, I think, I think that's what I'm saying is that if you're, if the point is to get this to somehow accompany the sheriff's report, I think it has to probably go to the prosecutor rather than the sheriff's.
Well, um, I would, if I.
Either, I guess.
If I could, to, 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 I would like to ask our township attorney to send it to the sheriff, the prosecutor, whoever our township attorney thinks.
Legal authority.
Should have it.
Yeah, legal authority.
Should have it.
Appropriate legal authority.
So on the, so, so part of why I included in the motion to request any information regarding any investigation the sheriff is undertaking related to the township is our township attorney, our township manager, our township insurance company, I, the clerk, this board, what we know of it is what you have reported at one board meeting and in the sun times. So I do not know what was reported to the sheriff, what crime someone thinks may have been committed. I do not know anything about it. And if it is in fact a crime against the township, the township attorney, township manager, at least one other member of this board should know what's going on. And it is I, I will just say that. And, and no one does, and, and I don't know if you reported a crime, you know, in your personal capacity, and I certainly, if you committed, if, if you reported a crime to you, against you as a person, as a private citizen, certainly that's none of our business.
Yeah.
But if you reported a crime against the township, that's certainly someone's business here.
So, I, I second your, I mean, you're gonna, you said let's have this meeting.
I think the motion's been made in.
Yeah, I, I agree. Let's just do the vote. I, I think everybody's gonna.
So I have a question. You say is undertaking. What if they say, we're not undertaking anything, we're done, we're closed out, you're in the rearview mirror, Sio, and they're not undertaking it? Do you want it is undertaking or has undertaken?
Well, yeah, that's a great point, John. Given Will's update, any investigation, the sheriff. Mariah, what is your?
I would just say related.
Yeah, so you got the is undertaking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Related to the, any investigation, the sheriff.
Any related? Investigation of the sheriff's department related to the township.
By the sheriff.
Sheriff's department.
By the sheriff.
Office.
It's fine by the sheriff. It's fine.
Related to the township. And so, so it'll be a meeting and I would suggest, you know, I said at a time that most board members may attend. I would hope we could do this soon. Um, and would hope that um, Mariah, you can send it to the sheriff and any other agencies, our township attorney seems appropriate. Yeah.
Sure. But what are you having in mind in terms of the next steps in this matter, final part of the motion?
Well, what I have in mind is that, now I didn't know it went to the prosecutor. You mentioned that just before this meeting to me tonight. Um, but um, what, what is, I think the kind of oddness of the situation is that shortly after this email, um, Chris Bailey gave us an initial report, like, hey, it seemed like a snafu. Um, I understood that you had filed a report, a criminal report of some sort to the sheriff. I'm not sure about what crime or what might have happened. It didn't, to my knowledge, especially as the recipient of the email, you know, there was no sign of anything nefarious. Certainly, we got that immediate reassurance from our IT director and others. Um, so that's why I brought the motion, which passed unanimously in November, to just ask our township manager, hey, look into this, see what's up. You know, something unbeknownst to the rest of us has been reported to the sheriff about something that is apparently totally innocuous and our IT professionals had immediately said that. Um, so this is kind of the result of that request from back in November. We have this highly technical report. I hope we can quickly have a meeting, all hear each other's questions and answers. And then the next steps is um, I would hope that we as a board then have enough information to kind of state if this is put to bed.
A conclusion.
A conclusion. And maybe it's not. Maybe we have more. And, and certainly, Will, if you have any additional information that we at this table don't have, because the information I have is this and everything you know. So, you know, certainly if anybody has additional information that could help illuminate the board, but this sort of, you know, it, it got referred to the sheriff's department with any, without any clear indication of why anybody might have a reasonable suspicion that anything nefarious had happened.
So, yeah, so let's just get the report.
It was just super weird.
Yeah.
I want to clear it up.
And then, you know, you know, like you said, get the experts in, we can all ask questions and go from there. So go ahead and is there a date you wanted to set that up during this proposed a date or?
Yeah, you all want to just check your calendars real quick?
I have my calendar.
We want that, we want to have a special meeting.
Oh, I think so.
I mean, if you have to find out when the companies.
That's right. Thank you.
What, can we do this, Jess? Why don't we just do like an hour early before a regular meeting or something like that? Is that what you're thinking?
You know, Mark, actually, I, I thought of this earlier and forgot. I put at a time that most both board members can attend. Um, you know, with the NI discovery rep IT, Chris Bailey. So I think we may be a little beholden to their schedule.
Right.
And but I don't think it would be inappropriate to have this like during a workday if needed.
Yeah.
Because we may, we may need to do that, but could we all just kind of commit to making ourselves available?
So, so we'll find out when N one D digital forensic or whatever their, N one D digital is available. And then we'll, we'll work from that to try and schedule it tonight. I think the most.
Thirty days.
People.
Yeah, exactly. Like in the next thirty days, because um, this is, this has been lingering. Um, but if anybody on the board has any more information about this matter rather than this, you know, that the sheriff might be looking at any other information rather than this.
I don't think the sheriff is looking at any additional information at this point.
And if anybody has information that the sheriff has, that the board doesn't have, the board could have to inform us.
How would you have?
Yeah, I don't have any.
I'm not sure.
We know an incident. How would we have anything more, Jess?
The, how we would is, is because I, I have not talked to the sheriff. I have not given the sheriff anything. If, if anyone has provided the sheriff with information that would be illuminating.
Well, I think, you know, several members of the board were interviewed by the sheriff.
Oh, okay.
You say several?
Well, I know you talked to the sheriff. I've talked to the sheriff.
You were interviewed by the sheriff?
I talked with the sheriff.
Okay.
And I was asked questions by the, the detective who was investigating. And I, I don't know, actually, I don't know of several members. I just know of two members of the board.
Who else do you know of?
Well, trustee Carrie.
Okay.
And I provided the sheriff, my attorney, a pro- provided a lot of information to the sheriff department.
Let's just get, let's just get this reviewed and go from there. I mean, we don't want to kind of debate this enough, but it'll be, because I think that will really in, in, be enlightening. And really kind of just ship, like, can we put this to bed? If there is other action, we will lean on.
And if there's other information, I would trust everybody to bring it forward if somebody has better IT information than they do, right?
I'm curious, did, did you file this? Please ru- report on behalf of the township.
I filed this police report um, because I did not know whether this was a crime. I went to the sheriff's office. I think we've had this conversation before.
We, we never finished.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure that we can finish it tonight. And I'm not sure that we can, as a board, as someone we're saying, put this to bed. I mean, it's now in the hands of the prosecutor. So.
But, but we can learn about.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, sorry.
Yeah, go.
I think what we're talking about is that we've got two parallel things happening, right? The sheriff department is doing their thing. We have no control over that. We can't.
Right.
We keep, we don't start it. We don't stop it. We don't say where it goes next. But the, but this board agreed to do something internal, which we now have.
Hmm.
And there is a potential after having that meeting with ND one that there would be a conclusion to that part of it. So that's what, that's what we're talking about.
It'd certainly be better understanding after a chance for them to explain all the technical needs of their.
Yes.
So I'm sorry, uh, trustee Noel, I didn't need to skip your question.
So what, what is the motion? So you just want to put a motion that we all get together in the next thirty days during, at a time that we can, right?
Yeah, my, my motion would be these, these three parts here. Um, in the middle to call for the special meeting dating time to be scheduled by the township manager. When most board members may attend to discuss the report with a rep of the company, Chris Bailey and township attorney. To also request the township attorney deliver a copy of the report to the sheriff's office and any other agencies she deem appropriate.
Appropriate legal agency or something like that.
Yeah. And to request any information regarding any investigation by the sheriff related to the township. And to request that the township attorney prepare a proposed resolution for possible action at a next regular meeting regarding any recommended next steps in this matter.
I think you, I think you seconded.
That's all friendly to my seconded, Kathy?
I think I did. Okay.
So, is that the ye, your name, Mo?
Yeah, all vapers say aye.
Aye.
Thank those opposed. The motion, the three-part motion has passed.
And passed unanimously? Is that correct, Will?
I, I didn't hear any nays. So yes, I would say yes.
You said yes?
By acclamation.
Okay. Did you say yes, Will?
Oh, no, I said aye.
Okay, great.
So um, this brings us to, I believe, public comment number two, or, I don't know, it may be past that. We had a hearing, so. Yeah, hold on. Well, we have one participant. We have one, one person in person.
One Sial resident here.
Thank you. I see you.
Hi, Kathleen Brand. Um, I don't understand, Mr. Hathaway, why you won't say whether you filed the report as a private individual or on behalf of Sial Township. You have never answered that question. And you, why can't you just answer that one question?
I'm not sure what the answer is to that question. I just went and talked to the sheriff's office.
Well, you either did it as Will Hathaway, private citizen, or Will Hathaway as supervisor for Sial Township.
Well, I'm not sure what the technical difference is between that. When I'm reporting something that happened in Township Hall, I suppose I'm doing it as the supervisor.
Okay, so you reported a crime that the rest of the board never weighed in on, or an attorney.
Is that what we do? Do we weigh in when we're making reports to the sheriff's office? What do you guys think?
It would, it should be a board action.
Public comment. All right, Will. I'm sorry. I didn't, I started answering the questions. Please go on with your comment.
I appreciate the answers. It, I think it's significant because it should have required board action if you think you're, you're doing that on behalf of the board. Okay, another item. I need to say this now because um, salary increases are coming on April first. And um, Treasurer Palmer, you have said repeatedly, repeated, repeatedly that the ninety thousand dollars is too much for the position. You said it multiple times.
And I still say it again and again.
Okay, that's great. That's great. So what I am suggesting is that you don't accept the raise. You don't have to accept the raise.
Well, I think there's, there's a legal thing there.
No, there's not.
No, because we have a commission rather than a committee. So that needs to be.
Okay, so that was our lip service that it's too much. If you have the ability right now to say and make it a donation, you have the ability to not take the ninety thousand, one way or another. So I want to also say that about uh, trustees. The way the trustees um, salary was determined was based on level of effort. The commission uh, contemplated that quite a bit. I brought evidence of level of effort. And that's how the commission decided to take the salary up. So if there's any trustees that are not committing the level of effort, you have the same opportunity to decline the raise, especially if you only read the first page of the budget. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Just participating remotely, I would like.
Uh, I see Paula's hand and Rob's hand in that order. Good. You know, you're first, right? I'm you, you. Paula?
Yeah. Oh, I thought you were gonna take Rab.
Well, you're, you're first on the list.
You're up, Paul.
Paula, it's your turn.
Then Rab will be next. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Rab, you want to go?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, um, thank you, clerk Flintoff for bringing up the uh, the sheriff gate issue. We learned more tonight than we have in the last four months. I sincerely appreciate that. I'm glad the, the uh, independent uh, study is finally coming to light. It's about time. It's been over four months and what, as you said, that was lingering way too long. I would also like to thank uh, our code enforcement officer, Sean McCormick, for pursuing the GFL direct complaints. Uh, it will be very interesting to see those numbers when they finally come in. Uh, the DDA items uh, that trustee Carrie was asking for and, and the reports would be a normal part of the supervisor report. Um, those reports stopped months ago. And if uh, if we had supervisor reports, those DDA updates would have been naturally part of that in a normal situation. Uh, when I raised my hand during the uh, the uh, public hearing the second time, you gave Jim Ferguson two chances to speak. And I simply wanted to add that uh, the Carlyle Grill is a institution. And as I said in my letter, and also to alert you to uh, Phil Green's letter in the packet. I don't know if any of you have seen that letter. Talking about the Carlyle Grill. Good. Um, and then lastly, it was, it was very silly to think that I was suggesting the code enforcement officer um, um, pursue vehicles and make traffic stops. Clearly, that is not what I was suggesting. What I was suggesting was that the power he does have is fines. He can find out what the company is that is, has the truck and issue a fine to the company. He can talk to the gravel pit, which is where most of these trucks are coming from, the gravel pit at Zeeb and Sial Church. And most of the Jake break issues are coming down the hill uh, um, on Zeeb. And uh, he could certainly find out uh, what those trucks were. So it was very silly to think that I was asking him to do something like that. Um, and our, our code enforcement officer is new and doesn't live here. So he might not know that our sheriffs, uh, of our sheriff's history of being totally incapable of handling noise complaints. Um, yes, I understand that that is something where they would ask somebody to turn the music down. But um, again, his, his power, his ultimate power is in fines. And if he doesn't respond to noise complaints, then there is absolutely no use in having our code enforcement officer. Um, the noise complaints, primarily the party bar noise complaints, have to be a significant part of his duties. Thank you.
Paula, is Paula ready?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to say congratulations.
You fell out, Paula.
The blanket congratulation.
Yeah, can you hear me?
You're back.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to congratulate uh, Supervisor Hathaway for once again surprising everybody with information or some plan that nobody knew about. Whether it be the uh, Dexter merge, taking some of Sio. It's just, I shouldn't laugh, but it's almost every meeting. And then I want to say, my concern was not about the meters and the hookups. It, mine is at the actual capacity of the main sewer issue. Obviously, that's not my wheelhouse. But that was what I'm worried about. Like, all this expansion uh, is the actual, not, not the uh, hookup, but the actual pipes themselves. And then um, I want to say that uh, I'm trying to read this little list that I made as I went along. It says um, so I got that. Oh, the HVAC. Uh, now, Kathy, you talked about uh, filtration. What I read was that they're not, that that HVAC wasn't going to even go into the meeting room. So that's something to check on. And also HVAC, from what I've read for commercial buildings, is that below thirty degrees, they do not function. That's thirty degrees Fahrenheit, and they don't function. And you have to have a gas backup, so. Uh, plus all the duct work and all that was for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I want you to know, I got on uh, Nextdoor about a month ago. And, and there is a general feeling, whether it's Ann Arbor, here in Sial, people are very concerned about, obviously, about the property taxes and millages. There are, I mean, they're talking about, should they buy a used ambulance in Ann Arbor? So, you know, just get the general feeling that there's a lot of people that don't watch these meetings, but they're uh, going to the assessor tribunals. And there's a lot of that on, on Nextdoor. So there's a lot of feeling. So think about that when you're planning, which I think you are all doing. Um, and um, and as far as the DDA goes, you've asked them to do a special meeting. And that was supposed to be arranged, uh, Supervisor Hathaway, because you're the liaison. And I watched, they only meet once a month. Maybe they need to have a special meeting to discuss their plan. And uh, they've had plenty of time. I watch the DDA meetings. I actually watch all of the meetings. And um, I've appreciated having Zoom. And it's a long meeting for you all. And thank you for all your hard work on the budget and all these other issues. And I don't know why that issue ever became criminal unless it's a personal thing and you should pay for it. Because that's going to put the township, we've already paid enough attorney fees because of you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Well, I'd like to respond to um, Rod, Rob.
Oh, is there any more?
Let's wait until we've exhausted all.
Sir, Jonathan?
Yeah, hey folks, I don't, I'll, I'll go quick. Um,
Yeah, hey, folks, I don't, I'll, I'll go quick. Four months ago, when I saw and heard what happened with this silly email sheriff gate thing, I explained very clearly, Will left himself logged in. You know, look, I, I did support for the university for fifteen years, ran analytics services. This is like, you know, very common dumb mistake that people make. And at the time, I said it was a nothing burger. But then he went to the sheriff and the sheriff's got the prosecutor. And, and it's really, it's a nothing burger with stupid cheese. And folks, this is a waste of time, energy, and our tax dollars. And it is because our supervisor is playing a game trying to get somebody. Because that's what our supervisor does. And it's usually women. It's usually powerful women. Except for Donna. The silly one. All right, good night, folks.
Thanks, Jonathan.
I see no further hands raised.
Okay, you wanted to.
I just wanted to say to Rob, that gravel pit is no longer active. And there are asphalt companies around there, but the gravel pit itself is not active.
Oh.
I'm pretty sure.
Thank you, Kathy. It's good to know. But the primary issue there is the hill on Zeeb Road. That's why they're using their Jake rigs. And, and any truck coming down there can use their Jake rig. So that's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah. And a quick comment. Rob, I want to apologize to you. Thanks for bringing my attention to the fact that I said you can't speak again. We've allowed Jim Cameron to speak twice in person. So my apologies to you, Rob.
Motion to adjourn?
So.
All right, moved by Palmer, support by Rizzo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, be adjourned till ten fifty seven.